Good evening, everybody. I'm calling to order the August 28th, 2025 meeting of this North Andover School Committee. Let's get started by standing for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We're going to start with our consent agenda. First on that list, we have three sets of minutes. Does the committee have a preference to do them all at once or separately?
I think we can do them all at once.
Okay, so I'll take, the chair will take a motion to, we don't entertain a motion about the minutes.
I move we accept the minutes of May 29th, June 5th, and June 12th, 2025.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Thank you. Are there any amendments, changes, notes, or anything that we need to do to fix the minutes? Are they good as they are?
No, no, I have a couple.
I'll go around the table, Mr. Moskovich.
Well, why don't you take somebody first? I'll have to, I wrote them out.
Yeah, I found some typos. They're minor, but, you know, since I saw them, we should probably correct them. Pam Lathrop's name is spelled many different ways.
Oh, excellent.
Okay, so we'll just ask that they get.
Yep, so we should, yeah, and May 29th in particular, just a global replace or search for that. On June 5th.
Mr. Brown, do you use your microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, so that was May 29th. On June 5th, there are, in the, in the recognitions communications roundtable section, it was written pride and pop schools, as opposed to pride and popsicles.
Is that on the, on page one?
I didn't take the page number down, but it's, it's pretty obvious.
I'll find the place for that.
I got it.
Okay, you got it. And then, and Ms. Lathrop, there is spelled like a llama, L-L-A-T-H-R-O. I'm sorry, it jumped out at me, but.
That's great.
So, we should.
We'll fix that.
Yep. And then on June 12th, in the chair's report, this one is actually more significant because it could be misread. In the MOA, it should, it should read, MOA would include, dot, 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 and the word include is missing.
Which paragraph are you in in chair's report?
Uh, let me find it.
Well, yes, it reads W-O-U-L-J-D.
Yep, and then, and then, the word include should be following that.
Yes, and the J should come out.
Right. And the word include is pretty important there.
I'm just looking for where it is on the.
Page three.
Page three, towards the bottom?
Yeah. I apologize, I didn't print them out, I just did this online, that's why I'm having a little trouble finding it, but.
While you're looking, I'll give mine, and then you can.
I just want to mark this. Oh, there it is.
Okay, and then, a little bit down farther, there's a discussion about, about the NATA president's allocation of time.
Mm-hmm.
And instead of the numerals 0.8 and 0.2, it actually used the words point eight.
Got it.
Yep, and point two.
Thank you. Anything else?
And then there's a minor one, where I nominated you to be chair, except it's spelled, it's misspelled. Nominate.
Got it, thank you. Mr. Moskovich?
So, May 29th, there's something about outside special councils. So, a student council is spelled C-I-L, but.
Do you have the page?
Another name for a lawyer is S-E-L. It's, it's May 29th. Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Page one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I had the passage part.
On page one?
Mid, yeah, mid-page.
Got it.
And then, in the superintendent's report, it should be increased with a D tuition, as opposed to increased tuition. I'm sure Pam said it correctly.
Where, it was in the?
It's on page four, but I can't find.
The superintendent report is on page four.
What was the, what was it?
Page four, it's on.
Oh, it's increased tuition, not increased tuition.
Yep, thank you. I'll find that. Anything, Ms. Sams? Ms. Cormier? Thank you, gentlemen, for that thorough reading. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to a vote to accepting the minutes. I'll present, I'll make sure I include those typos to Michelle to get them corrected before they get officially then published up. Since there's nothing substantive, we can go ahead with a vote. Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Ms. Sams?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you.
Are we able to project yet? Still waiting for the call. So.
Just take a drink while, I'm sorry.
Yes. We can't project the, you have that in your packet, but we won't be able to project it for the folks at home.
Okay.
The.
Should we do the budget transfer?
The consent items.
People had the link at home, look.
Yep, these links.
Oh, here we go.
There we go.
Thank you. Great. Ms. Ando, are you presenting the donations, the grants?
Okay, yes, I will do the genocide education grant first, if that's okay?
Perfect, absolutely.
And then I think Ms. Lathrop is going to speak to the digital equity. So, the genocide education grant, you can see our award letter in there. We got this grant to increase genocide education in our schools. I worked with a team at the high school last year for, I think it was $20,000. This year, our award is $40,000. We're working, sorry, I was telling everybody, we're working closely. The high school English and history departments are working closely with the Center for Holocaust and Genocide Studies at Salem State College to offer. About half of that amount will be in professional development opportunities for our teachers, and the other half will be in stipends for lesson planning, so that they can incorporate what they've learned into their lessons. And so, there's quite a few events happening in, throughout the year. Native American history, teaching genocide in Darfur, half-day, the eugenics movement, and then a three-day educator conference in teaching the Holocaust centered on liberation, displaced person camps, and reemergence of juris life and culture, especially sharing stories from Massachusetts. And so, we're excited to continue that work. That's work that's been going on for about 18 months at our high school English and social studies departments.
Phenomenal.
Thank you for doing that, so, so important. Is it, will it be at the high school and the elementary school? Is it a different way? Will it get woven in?
Not yet. Most of our work is still nine to 12.
Nine to 12, okay.
Thank you.
I believe the parameters of the genocide education law, and then the grant are, it's mainly for programming for six to 12.
Really?
That's just like, in terms of what the grant is supposed to.
Yeah, what is 12?
Is it, it comes under some law?
Yeah, and.
The state legislature passed it?
Three or four years ago, the state legislature passed a law, and then, they've been, this is the third or fourth year of the grant, maybe third, that they have then had monies available, which was part of the state law, to have monies available for schools to do the work.
Great.
Any other questions, comments? Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we accept the genocide grant as presented in the packet.
In second.
Move on to a vote, Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Ms. Sams?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Ms. Lathrop?
The next grant is the digital equity implementation grant, and this is actually a grant that the town of North Andover was awarded. They were awarded a $60,000 grant from the Massachusetts Broadband Institute through their municipal digital equity implementation program. The town has elected to use this money to purchase Chromebooks for the students of North Andover Public Schools. So, the select board has formally accepted this grant, but they are using the funds to purchase more Chromebooks for their schools. So, this is more of just a recognition and a thank you to the town and to the select board for having the money go towards the school Chromebooks.
Fantastic.
Another great display of partnership from the town to go after this, to get the funds, and to, you know, to work with you, to identify a need.
It's great.
So, this is fantastic partnership.
So, we don't officially need to vote to accept it, but I'd like to make a, I'm going to make the motion, because it's not official thing to say thank you to the select board for doing the work to, to get the grant, and to, on our behalf, and to allow us to get roughly 240-ish Chromebooks.
Right.
That's amazing.
I have a question. So, I know right now they have, what is it, a cart for every two classrooms?
Mm-hmm.
So, is that still going to be the standard, and just to have some extra to rotate when they're broken?
Correct. That's still going to be the standard. I think, Mr. Grant, we'll be looking at what the, you know, the usage of the carts might be, and might give us some opportunity to put some more into the elementary school, especially in the fourth and fifth grades. I think that's where some of the places that we're looking for. We also have a, a potential another group of Chromebooks that are being donated from another organization, somewhere around 300 Chromebooks. We don't have that one finalized yet, but that will be great, to be able to support that.
Mr. Chair, we need a second, so I'll make the second for that, for your thank you note.
And Dave Brown, again, just a message of thank you officially to the select board and the town for doing this for us. Any discussion or anything to add? Go to a vote, Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Ms. Sams?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
And Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. Moving on to a budget transfer.
I am so pleased that we have Gail Dowd, our interim financial director, that is joining us here, that I can have Gail share with you the next two items, starting with the budget transfer.
Excellent. Budget transfer is in your packet, I don't have it linked.
So, included in the packet is a summary memo of three budget transfers that we would like to bring forth to the school committee this evening. And what we're doing is, obviously, as we're starting out the year, we're making sure we're attaching every spend to the appropriation, and as we're coming across items that were either unbudgeted or coming in higher than anticipated, we're identifying the source of funding, and we want to bring forth any of those to the committee, especially if we're transferring between salaries and expense, or vice versa. So, the first one within the packet is, we've had some items within central office. As you know, we did a lot of cuts while we were developing the budget. We're seeing some of the membership subscriptions, technology renewals coming in higher. We also have some funds for strategic planning that I know has been discussed as part of this. So, we are proposing, it's a total of slightly over $35,000 that we are going to tap into funds we had set aside for district-wide substitutes for various professional development opportunities. We've worked very closely, we're comfortable that we still have enough funding available, and we also know we have grant funding that we can utilize to help assist with some of the substitutes if needed for professional development, if we're doing it during school days, that we would need to have teachers out of the classroom. So, we've been working very closely to assess that, and we're comfortable that the remaining balance will be enough to get us through.
To cover our substitutes.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's not like a regular daily sub, it's, a teacher's going to do some professional development, so the substitute for that.
Yes.
Which, when you apply for grants, can be used for that type of thing.
Exactly. So, we have multiple buckets, and we had set aside money for central office for the entire district. This is not touching any of the building-based budgets.
Thank you. Question, so, it sounded like you said you would be, some of this money would go to pay a substitute, but the, the central office doesn't need substitutes?
It's district-wide, we budget it within the district-wide cost center, so that if we're doing district-wide professional development, and we have to provide substitutes, we're not having each building.
I got it, okay.
One of the things that we discovered last year, that prior to this budget, we didn't put money in for central, for central office to cover substitute pay, but some grade levels, some, like, maybe elementary, middle, high, or at different points, and we are calm, we are having the teachers come here, or come, go somewhere for professional development, and it's taking out of the school budgets. And, so, what we did this year was, we made a line item, that if we are providing professional development for our teachers, then it'll come out of central office, but if the principals are sending their teachers somewhere, or if they want to do something in-house, it will come out of their school budget.
Okay, that makes sense, got it.
I just want to say, that's a really good idea.
Thanks.
No, seriously, because you want the principal to feel that she or he has a budget, and they should be able to think about how to spend it, and I just think it's great that you're doing that.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, that makes sense now, thank you.
The second item, as, you know, we used to have our 18th, and I know that there'll be a special education update at the next meeting, so, we used to have a program with the Andover Public Schools for the 18 to 22-year-olds. We had budgeted within our out-of-district tuition to continue that program. We were in the midst of discussions about breaking up the band, if you will, and bringing that program in-house, but that was not determined at the time of the budget. So, while we budgeted funds, it was within the tuition line item, because that's what it was. Now that we've bought the program in-house, we needed to hire an additional teacher and a transition specialist. So, this is to transfer the funds out of the tuition into salaries, because we're now housing the program in-house.
So, we were paying from the out-of-tuition, because there was, we were sharing the program with Andover, which was a good thing versus.
Exactly.
Because it helped us to be efficient, but since it's come back to us completely, we're moving the money from tuition back to a different line item to pay for those salaries.
Correct, because the teachers will now be.
Only us.
North Andover Public School teachers, as opposed to Andover.
So, what has changed to make it now better to have it in-house, whereas it was better before to share it?
I'm actually going to, if, except typical pause.
You're going to hear about that from Lynn O'Neill. She's not here this evening, she's taking her child to college. So, next, at the next school committee meeting, Lynn is going to go through all of the special education programs and give you a broader.
That's fine.
And the reason, slightly cart before the horse on this one, is because with school starting, we wanted to be very upfront to say, our headcount will go up by this, and we want to get the salaries in the right place, because obviously, teachers will be getting paid shortly. So, the program, Lynn will do a great job next week going through all of it, I just wanted to be transparent and get the money in the right place at the get-go.
And I just want to clarify, we're not, this is, the, the money is staying with these students, it's just being used in a different way.
Exactly.
So, there's no money coming out of this program.
Correct.
We just can't pay our local people with out-of, from the out-of-tuition.
These students are still benefiting from.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It is the amount that we had budgeted for this program when it was out-of-district greater than what it will take to run in-house, or at least not, will not be more.
It will not be more.
Not be more to do it in-house.
It will not be more than.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have, we're not running into a budget problem by trying to do it in-house.
We're not running into, we're still going through to determine any supplies or other items, so there's still a little bit of money left from that one line item, but it is not costing more to bring it.
More, okay.
The goal is that it would be more cost beneficial to run it in-house.
And servicing our students within our district. This is fantastic.
Yes.
Thank you. And number three?
And number three, this is a, I'm going to say a little bit of a cleanup. So, when we budgeted, which we'll go into a lot more detail when we do the budget for next year, you know we have different sources. I'll look over at my friends across from me, sources of funds. One of the items we have is the Amazon funding. So, when we were doing the budget, we had included all materials and items within the various buckets. What we realized when we actually started to look at everything, the Amazon funding is very specific as to what it can be utilized for, it can only be used for STEM. So, when we went looking at everything, we realized one of our district curriculum leaders, directors, I'm going to say the title wrong, is 100% STEM. So, where this proposal is to move her into the Amazon funding to ensure we're fully utilizing that the way it's supposed to be, and some of the money we had targeted doesn't quite fit within the parameters of STEM, so we're basically going to put the salary into the Amazon and take expenses out to use for new adoptions and curriculum. So, again, we're staying within the total funding we had, it's geography to get it in the right buckets, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so, so, I know, you know, I just want to make sure we, we check this off. One of the issues that we felt, we fell into in the past is using, you know, like, grant money for salaries, and then running into that not being carried over, but that's been accounted for and thought through for the next seven years.
It has, so, Amazon funding is available for, it's several more years, it might even be more than that. So, we are, as we're building the budget, we're looking at all of that, making sure anything we're putting anywhere in, that we have an entry and exit strategy for any of the items we're doing that with. But when we looked at it this year, we will, it makes sense to make sure we're fully utilizing those funds and not leaving them there, even though they'll carry every year, we don't want to create a cliff where we have all of this money in STEM that we can't use. So, this gets all the buckets in the right place, but I think Kristen and I are in each other's office constantly.
There's no fear that this money's going to run out next year, and then we're going to be like, what do we do for this really important position?
Exactly.
Just, just an accounting question, I think I get it, but, so, the fact that you're moving from a bucket called salaries to a bucket called new adoptions, doesn't reduce the headcount, right? It's just, you're just accounting more accurately?
It's accounting for where the, it's getting recorded, correct, yes.
Okay, so it's accounting.
The FTE will still be here, it's just the funding source for the FTE will change. So, no change in total headcount on payroll.
Okay.
Or total budget.
Or total budget, thank you, yes, more important, as importantly.
It's a geography. I like that.
So, we just want to make sure we're being fully transparent as we're moving these items around. So, those are the three that we have, and then I would anticipate going forward, we would do this more so on a quarterly basis, but we wanted to start the year out correctly.
Thank you for, one, having transfers to, being thoughtful enough that you identified how, like, their transfers need to exist, and to how to make it all work the best way possible, really appreciate it, and being very timely with it.
Well, it's also signaling that they're actually looking at each account and saying, are we actually going to be able to finish the year, do this?
You're doing the work that you need to do.
The exact right thing to do is to transfer when you can't, so, thank you.
And it's wonderful to see this, because we haven't been seeing a lot of this before, so.
It's nice when you're fully staffed.
Yeah.
And you have the appropriate people doing the appropriate jobs.
Yes, but we appreciate, I guess I'm saying, we appreciate.
We deeply appreciate. Any further questions for Gail?
Do we need a motion, Mr. Chair?
We will need, yes, we, we need a, so, because it's a budget transfer, we don't do a first and second read, we can put it into a consent item, consent agenda item.
All right, well then.
So, but we do need a motion and to vote on.
Then I would like to make a motion to accept the budget transfer recommendations that Gail Dowd has presented to us.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I will second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Sams. Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Sams?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Going on to revolving accounts approval. Again, it's not, this one, because it's money that already we've allocated and done, we don't need to do a first read or anything, we can do it as part of consent agenda.
Great, so, thank you very much. Included in the packet should be the.
Big piece of paper.
Thank you. So, I'll, this is more housekeeping, which is why we wanted to put it in the consent. So, this is to get the school committee's approval, and we did a quick memo as well, I, I think memos help explain the situation ahead of time. So, this is to set up the initial budgets for the FY '26 revolving accounts. I will say, going forward, within budget books, this is something that we could incorporate within the budget books, to give a section of just sort of how we get there, look at the balances. But what we did for these is, we, to set up the initial budgets for FY '26, we were looking at the amount of revenue we collected in prior years, and use that for the baseline for the '26 budget. We will continue to monitor that as we get fees in for these programs. To the extent we notice either revenues coming in higher or lower, we would then come back to the committee to ask for approval to increase the funding. The one that I will call out is that we do have, briefly, I think, the next, one of the next agenda items is to look at the community programs, because we are coming forth asking for approval to increase the fees. So, the budget that we have reflected in here would take into account the increased revenue based upon the fee proposal that we're doing. So, if that gets approved, we will make sure that we use the updated revenue figures. If there are questions or challenges, we would need to go back and really look at the expense side of it, because the revenue increases is done to support the expenses. So, I believe these are similar reports that you've received in the past.
A quick reminder for everybody, how are revolving, how are these revolving accounts different than the regular operating budget accounts?
These are all fee-based revenue, so, it's transportation for fees paid for buses, it's the athletic fees that we charge, it's the fees for community programming, for the lunch program, it's a combination of grants, federal funds, paid meals. So, there, this is all revenue that is fee-generated coming into it, that's not out of the taxpayer base.
And then it gets directly used for those same exact services.
Exactly.
Questions?
So, these, on this page, there's a whole bunch of basically numbers, and then there's descriptions, but many of the descriptions repeat.
It's.
So, is there another column missing, the one that talks about what purpose it is, or where the money comes from?
So, a general description of what the revolving account is for?
Well, for example, there are three that say salaries other, like, is one of them, for, for example, athletics, and another one for something else? Is there a column over in the left that didn't quite make it on the page?
There is not, these are the descriptions right out of the accounting system, so typically, it's a different, it's who makes up the grouping, we can, we can do a roadmap for folks going forward when we, I think when we move into the budget.
It could be salaries like salary, like the community, like the director salary, the employee salaries of the teaching assistants that are part of it.
In the every other week voucher, warrant, it, that's there, which is extremely helpful.
Point taken, we can add that to the reports going forward.
Yeah, it'd be helpful. Any other questions?
Yes, what is KS slash B.C.?
Kids Stop Breakfast Club.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cormier.
Like, thank you for that.
Really trying to figure that out.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Col.
To me, KSBC, by the way, is Kittredge School Building Committee.
I had a question on the facilities custodial overtime, and it has for the revenue, donations and miscellaneous fees. How do we know that we'll get enough donations and miscellaneous fees to be able to cover that overtime?
So, those are, as we're using them, we get, we have invoices that go out to account for if, if it's related to rentals or items like that, so we know, so we're tracking. This is based upon prior year, so if we do not have the revenue, we wouldn't pay it out. So, this is to get us into a baseline, so that we know what the parameters are, but we're on a monthly basis looking at the revenue in and making sure it's matching up.
But our vote.
The expenses.
If there's a vote, we're not appropriating this money, that is, it's not, we're not giving unconditional permission to spend it if it isn't actually there.
Any, any other questions?
Yes, accounting question. In the page two, revenue is shown as a negative number, and expenses are positive, and that's, I'm trying to make sense of that, under food services?
In a typical true accounting debit credit world, revenue is a credit which is a negative, debits are expenses which are a positive. If you're not, it's reversed, what you would think, so if you go back to your T accounts.
Yep, okay, yeah, you're right, I forgot about that.
This is my world, I could talk all day about this, but you don't wanna feel the debits.
So, it's a traditional accounting?
It's a traditional accounting that you revenue-
It's correct.
It is correct. Sometimes, I think, for the general audience, we try to change it to have it be logical, but accounting, traditional debit credit, credit is a negative, which is your revenues or credits.
Okay, so that's, that'll be consistent through, throughout this, then?
Question number one on the CPA exam.
Which I will never be taking.
Yes, I see, okay, yeah.
When you think about all of spending, it actually makes sense.
Yeah, that's, that's-
Thank you.
And that's, Gail, that's consistent throughout these three pages, right? Okay.
Any other questions? If not, the Chair will entertain a motion.
I move that we, um, accept the revolving accounts as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Sams.
I'll, I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Uh, any final questions, comments? Seeing none, Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Sams?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Chair of Votes, yes. Thank you. Going on to Communications, public comment. Uh, please state name, uh, name and address. Is that the right, is that's the rule? I forgot, sorry.
Hi, Sean Dunn, uh, 325 Berry Street. Um, so, uh, I think everybody probably remembers that the fiscal year 26 budgeting process was, uh, fraught with lots of difficulties. And there were lots of issues that were brought up, and there were a number of solutions that were proposed in the process of discussing the budget. Uh, one of the things that came up was a potential override, and one of the things, uh, we heard from this committee was that by the time we got to that discussion, it was too late, there wasn't enough time to go for one. So, uh, I just wanted to encourage, uh, I know that it's early, but if we can start the budgeting process early, if we can start discussing it in this forum early, and if we can get information from the Finance Committee, or whatever is needed to go through the process, hopefully, we don't have to go for an override. I wouldn't wanna do it, but if we do, I wouldn't wanna use an excuse that we don't have the time again. So, uh, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. We all take that in consideration to move budget earlier into the year. Appreciate it. Thank you. Seeing no more public comment, we're gonna move on to, um, I'm actually going to move our new business, the community program fees, up in the agenda to now. Um, I'm trying to not do moving around of the agenda as much as possible. You'll notice that actually our continued business is next, because we have, uh, Attorney McAvoy joining us, and we wanted to make sure, be mindful of his time, so I tried to note that on the agenda in advance. Um, but since this is new business, and we'll have time to ask some questions, and we won't be taking action till, until next time, I feel comfortable moving it up, so.
So, you'll find your paperwork for this right after the, um, one of the slide presentations. There was a cover, uh, letter from Gil.
So, after the teaching and learning updates, uh, has the, has the, this one. And we have Mr. Glon here.
Thank you, Captain Dunn, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, I'm here with the unenviable task of asking the committee to consider a fee increase for our before and aftercare programs.
Included in your packet should be a summary of what we will be discussing tonight, as well as a proposed budget, and what a fee increase would look like, and comparisons from surrounding districts. Sorry, I'm just, I get distracted by things in the corner of my eye. So, we, we monitor the revolving account closely, and over the past few years, we've noticed that we have kind of been fluctuating between breaking even, operating in the black a little bit, in the red a little bit. But this past fiscal year, we noticed that we operated with a bigger deficit than we had hoped for. Luckily, we have enough money in the revolving account to offset that deficit, uh, but that's not a practice we wanna get into in making it happen of. The goal of the revolving account is, our goal is to keep three months' operating expense in that account, and we're short of that right now, um, but we're hoping to build up to that. COVID really did do a big number on a lot of people, as we talked about, and we've still been crawling out of that hole. But we have seen increasing costs in staffing, and supplies, and utilities, and they keep surmounting, um, um, year after year. And what we're seeing is that it's not an enrollment issue, we're fully enrolled at all of our programs, we have steady enrollment. It's, we're seeing the needs of our children is changing from year to year, and specifically, when it comes to staffing, we always build in, um, some wiggle room for having to hire one-to-one special assistants for kids who need support in accessing our program. And that number has kinda jumped, especially this last past school year, we had to hire four additional people, and they will be on staff again this year. Unfortunately, we don't know the needs until we get the children on the first day of school, and then it kinda plays out as the year progresses. But that's one big expense we've had to incur, was hiring those support staff, so those students can access the program. As well as hiring a nurse, we do have a nurse now on staff at one of the schools, that she fluctuates from school to school to help support students that have medical needs. And they would not be able to access the program without her being present. Um, so that's been another expense that we've had to incur. Um, excuse me. Another issue that we're seeing is technology. Um, some of our technology that we use is outdated, and we need to start looking to upgrade that. Specifically, right here in Central Office, the computers that me and my admin use are, I think, six years old now, and that's ancient in technology terms. And we're constantly having to fluctuate between laptops and our desktops to make sure that things are working. So, we would like to be able to upgrade that equipment if we could. And technology at the after-school, before-school program looks a little differently, but it's still a need. We need each of our staff to have walkie-talkies, and I know it sounds like it's a fun game, but these are our lifeline. We are spread out amongst the buildings and playgrounds in emergencies, this is how we communicate. And those haven't been replaced in quite some time, so we, we've been piecing them together over the years, like by two, see if they match up by three, but it's time to do an overhaul there, um, to make sure we have higher-grade ones that work in, in emergency situations, because you'd be surprised that these big cement brick walls that we have get in the way of that. So, we, we learn that as we go. Um, and also, in terms of technology, a lot of our site coordinators who run our day-to-day operations do a lot of work at home. They don't have time to do it here in school, 'cause they're with, facing kids, and they're working with kids. So, a lot of them use their own equipment. So, I'd like to get some Chromebooks for them to use, so they don't have to use their own personal equipment to do the work that they need to do, um, on a day-to-day basis. Um, so that's that. And then some consumable supplies, we really cut our budget last year. If you look at, you'll see, like, our supply budget for Kid Stop was like $9,000, which is nothing. Like, we were literally getting donations from people, trying to save pencils and stuff like that, but the kids go through so many supplies, and we, we can't put band-aids on them anymore, we do need to reinvest in some, um, equipment for the kids. The schools have been great about letting us use some of the sports equipment, the, the phys ed teachers, but that's getting wear and tear, and now we wanna be able to help give back and to, to be able to, uh, you know, supply our programs with our own equipment. Um, so that's some of the reasons why we are seeing, um, our costs are increasing, our expenses are increasing. Another issue that we, that we have to, to look at is utilities, I think we talked about that, those keep going up. In terms of heat and electricity, we do, we are charged back a portion of that, based on the space that we use in the schools. Custodials, uh, fees for the work they do for us as well, is charged back to us, um, and I think those, those continue to go up as well. So, another thing that, um, I think is important to know is that, uh, we did actually raise our fees three years ago, and we did it by a, a, an amount of 5%, and it wasn't nearly enough at the time. I think I recommended 8% of the time, but they went with 5, um, at the time, and I just, it clearly wasn't enough, we needed to be at a little bit of a higher number, so that's why we're coming in at 10. It may seem high, but I think it's necessary. And the other issue is that we have a large number of students that qualify for free and reduced tuition. And what that means is, students that qualify for free and reduced lunch benefits, they are able to apply for that. And, um, if they get that benefit, it translates to the program. So, if they're a free lunch student, they get the program for free. And if they're a reduced, uh, lunch student, they get the program for half off, 50%. And as you can see, it's, it's quite a large number here, over the years, it's gone down a little bit, but it really fluctuates from month to month. So, we have a pretty good idea what it will be this year, but again, it, it can change to as many as eight or nine kids coming on the, on the scale or off the scale in any given month, based on, um, their household income, things have changed in their life, or what they qualify for. So, all that is taken into consideration when we, when we look at our budgets.
And you would think that if you're bringing X amount in, you would then just spend that amount, but because it's, the staffing is based on the total number of kids, if a family comes in that qualifies for some of those reductions, that we still need the same number of staff people.
Exactly, that's a good point, yeah. I mean, we, we staff it at 1 to 13 ratio regardless of who's doing it, right? So.
So, is this? Is this essentially another one of the revolving funds?
It's a revolving account.
It is a revolving-
It's a revolving account, yeah.
And do, do the parents of the other students pay for the students are subsidized, or do we put the money indirectly for that?
So, the money is, it's, it's the, all the fees that are generated for that program go to cover those expenses?
So, the answer is yes.
The other people are paying for it, yes.
There's no federal or state money?
There is no subsidization for this program.
I mean, conceivably, there could be.
There's, there's-
But, I mean, we, we could choose to, but we don't, is what you're saying.
Uh, not necessarily, there's, there's, so there's, what you can do is, you have options, right? So, you could, um, we're required to offer a sliding fee scale, okay, and it doesn't have to be what we offer. Right now, we offer 50% and a zero pay for free families. A lot of towns will do a 60-40 split, where if you're reduced, you pay 60% of the tuition, if you're free, you pay 40% of the tuition. Um, some towns do a 50-25 split. It really depends on the situation and what the town is looking to do. But that's a choice that we have to make as a, as a district, if that's what, the way we wanna go to help recoup some of those funds.
But the idea that, as a whole, the program pays for itself is consistent with what other districts are doing?
Correct.
So, the tricky part is if the program does not pay for itself, you would need to fund it out of the operating account? So, what we try to do is make all of the revolving accounts that you saw self-sufficient, so that we're not. And we wanna make the price reasonable, we don't wanna make it incredibly expensive, so we're pricing everybody out. We've done the benchmarking, we're still one of the lower.
Yeah, there's also a sheet that shows you-
There's a tuition fee comparison table.
Yeah, and that, that fee structure represents what we currently are using for, uh, rates, and you'll see we're right at the bottom of that list. Even with the fee increase, we'll still be in that level, we're not gonna be moving up that high on the chart.
With the fee increase, we'd be up at the, where Tingsborough is probably.
Probably, yeah.
And what we wanna try to do is come up with, and it coming right, you know, back with, the last time they did it, we're still on the heels of coming out of COVID. What we wanna try to do is come with fee increases that will get us a couple of years, rather than say, what do you need to get you over the hurdle right now? Because then what you're doing is every single year coming, asking for additional funds. So, what we're hopeful is that this 10% will allow us to-
We can get three years out of it, probably. Yeah.
We're, we're hopeful, and I think what we do on a, on a regular basis is we look at the staffing, do we need the number of hours? We did a lot last year to say, we can release some of the staff an hour, an hour and a half earlier, so that was able to save money. We look at some of the vendors that we bring in for enrichment services, and look at the structure of that and say, is that the best use versus having them in the classrooms with the teachers? So, we're constantly looking at ways to best utilize the funds. We look at some of the, um, field trips. So, we look at the bus costs, and what do, you know, we wanna get them out for enrichment, but what's the cost benefit? So, we're constantly assessing that, but as you know, the bus costs go up every year, so it's this-
Everything goes up.
It, it's a-
And by and large, the past couple of years, we've been pretty close to spending what we bring in. And we're just projecting this year that probably is not gonna quite work out.
And last year, it did not. Last year, we, we dipped into, you are able to have a carryforward in your revolving account, you can't, it's not a rainy day fund, but you can have three months to give you coverage, so you have three months of expenses in there because revenue lags. So, we, we do wanna be able to maintain that balance, and we did dip into it last year, because we did end
a little-
a little bit under, and if that continued, eventually, we would have to fund it out of the operating.
And I think an important thing to mention too, I'm sorry to cut you off, is that, um, some of these things are considered bubbles. Like, we see a bubble, like, in terms of the, the nursing that we need, the nursing staff that we need, I've been here for almost 20, this is my 20th year, we've never had to have a nurse on staff, but the last two years, we have. So, that will, that bubble will move out, and that's a, a big chunk of money that will recoup then at that point. Again, 'cause it's very, it's, it's very limited, um, reasons why we would need to have a nurse on site.
But you happen to need them now.
But we have, we have them now, yes.
And we need to have it.
So, as my, as my quick response to the abbreviation KSBC, I am one of the fortunate parents that manages to hit that connect button at that time period, and have, you know, and able to utilize this fantastic program. Um, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
As a parent, this is an amazing program. Um, question as to when, if we approve the increase, when would parents have to pay the increased amount?
So, we, we plan for an October 1st.
So, a month?
This, a month from now, yes, yeah. We, we put that in our welcome letter, that it would say, it said in some language, and that, that there could be a price increase, potentially. You're not, you're not the only one.
I got two letters, too, there's one for each program.
We did not wanna complicate it and try to make it retroactive.
Yeah, we're not gonna-
Once it's approved, we would do it forward-looking, not.
Our fees are released on the 1st of every month, so it would be for October 1st.
So, are the, I'm sorry, are these annual numbers, but you bill monthly, is that what you're saying, or are these monthly numbers?
Which sheet are you looking at, I'm sorry?
I'm looking at the, the, the rates.
Oh, these are monthly numbers.
They're monthly numbers.
That's the five days, the after-school, the five days-
That's the most expensive spot that we have, yeah, we have, yeah.
For the full, for the full program.
For the full five-day program till 6:00 PM, or for the morning program. The, the after-school program is a little tricky, where parents can register for as little as two days a week at different time slots, or three, or four, or five, so there's a lot of different pricing structures. That just, that represents the most expensive one.
If you do the five days a week morning and until 6 o'clock, it's, right now, it's $500 a month.
Okay.
So, if you do, you know, with a 10% increase, it would go to 550, right, so-
For both of those, yes.
Not, I'm doing the math in my own head.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
About the check, I'm right, right? So, it's 500 to 550. But then, for the $500, you have care from seven to six.
Seven to six.
It, I, I used it up until af, just after April vacation, when my kids are in fifth grade, it is a, for a lot of families, it is a necessity in terms of like, being able to, when you have two fam, families with two parents trying to work, getting kids to elementary school. It is a very important program that we run, and not a lot of communities necessarily have it as available, um, in their elementary schools, as convenient as we do. It is a wonderful thing we have here.
Yeah, and I wanna agree, 'cause it's, I am with Ms. Cormier, I use both the morning and afternoon, and it is amazing. It is a necessity for two, um, parents that work in the, in the household. And the fact that, within minutes, it fills up, attests to how incredible the, the leaders in this program are.
Yeah, we have wonderful people that work in these programs. They work long days, and they work very hard, and they do a wonderful job.
They are, they are amazing.
How big are the waiting lists?
So, at, depending on what school, um, we just actually cleared Thompson's today, which was great.
Awesome.
And we have, I believe we cleared Atkinson today as well. But the other three schools, since Kittredge is offline now, Sargent still has a waiting list, it's, it's quite long. Bradstreet has one as well, which isn't as long, I would say maybe 10 families on it right now, and Franklin has a small waitlist as well right now.
And do we have the ability at the, at Sargent to, we're limited there in terms of how big the, this program could be because of the space we have.
Because of the space we have. We went from, and I'll just give you an idea, we went from 98 kids a day last year to 150 a day this year, to, to, we absorbed all of the Kittredge families that, that were moved into there.
Were we able to absorb all the Kittredge families?
Every family that, any family that wanted, that came from Kittredge that wanted a spot, got a spot.
Okay, got a spot, so it was one of the, one of the things for those families.
Yep, they all got a spot that wanted the one, and we would, uh, like to say thank you to Karen Leahy at the Sargent for giving us some additional space to use to make that happen.
So, money would not be the obstacle to just raising, increasing capacity?
No, could, yeah, it's not.
So, we have a space?
It's, it's space and staffing. Um, we're required to keep a staff, a certain staff-to-student ratio, which is 1 to 13. And finding staff, you would think, would be easy, it's not as easy. We've been lucky that we've been utilizing Merrimack College students, uh, recently. We've had partnership with them, and we're looking into a new partnership with them that may get us staff, um, some students that will come here for free. And we'll do some community service hours on those early release days, um, but we're still working on that.
What is, for every child on the waiting list, how many are already in?
So, it depends on what school you go, you look at, they're very different. So, at the Atkinson school, I think we only have 58 kids per day there, as the, as the high number. Thompson's is in the 70s, Franklin's-
Sorry, are we talking about in the program or waiting?
In the program. On the waitlist, it's, it's, uh, they're all around 10 or 11, except for Sargent, which is maybe a little bit bigger than that, at this point.
So, the great majority of parents who want this are getting it?
Yes. The people on the waitlist would not say that, but the people who-
No, but I mean, the numbers-
Yeah, it bears out, we do, yeah, the people, the majority of people that wanna get in, I would say it's maybe 10 to 12% of people don't get throughout the, even if they're on the waitlist now, they'll probably get in at some point, as the, 'cause the, uh, enrollment fluctuates from month to month.
Question on the, um, projected expenses, I'm just curious, you mentioned hard, uh, new technology, like you wanted to buy some Chromebooks and stuff, but that's, that's capital, right? So, that, does that really, how does that work?
So, in terms of, like, supplies like that, like, you, you probably speak better to me than-
You consider them expenses?
Yeah, they consider expenses for us.
And then, but, but then I'm wondering why it's a zero, if you-
See, I don't, again, I don't know why that was in the budget, I'm not sure, that's never an item that we've ever filled. We've never had, we've never, uh, filled that line item, um, in the past, I don't know why it was still there.
No, no, I get that, but the 26 projected is also zero.
Yeah, we're not, it's not money, we, the money for those technology items would come out of the salary, I mean, the supply budget.
Oh, oh, okay.
We, we, we-
It'd be a different line.
It's a different line, it's there, it's in a different line. Yeah, that's why it's confusing, I apologize. Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Ms., uh, Mr. Glon, for being here and giving us the presentation, and for running the program, as well as all the other community programs that you do. If there's other questions that we have to think of after this, please, um, get them to Michelle before September 9th, 'cause our next meeting is on the 11th. One thing, if you could do for us for that night, on just the cover sheet, can you, um, just the, on the comparison one, can you add in what the new, the new column, what the new rates will be? Um, just where we would then fall in that chart, um, just so we can have that visual, yeah, on that one there. And we'll vote, uh, the plan would be to, um, discuss this, answer any other questions, and vote on this at the next meeting on the 11th, for a potential implementation October 1.
Can I just ask one quick question? If it didn't pass, what would be the ramifications of, on the program? If it didn't pass, what would be the ramifications on the program?
So we're looking at dipping into our, our, for lack of a better slush fund, or the revolving account, because there are some things we can't cut. In terms of staffing, we have to have those, those aides, we have to have the nurse there. We could try to cut as much of the supply budget as we can, but there's still things we have to have.
Would any of the spots be cut?
In terms of, no, no, that doesn't happen, yeah.
That would, that would actually almost...
Have the...
If you had to cut staffing, you'd have to cut spots.
I think we're, the areas we would, it would be similar to what we did last year. We'd look at, okay, what's the bare bones minimum for staffing? Can we let folks go early?
Yeah.
I know unpopular, that's what I would, I would have to do. I would then challenge and say, the transportation, if we do not take, if we do not have the children leave and go on some of the enrichment, it, we would have to balance all of it, because we do have outside vendors that come in to do programs. I know sometimes, I might be wrong on some of these, looking at other places where I've been, you could have somebody that's coming in to do origami, chess club, cooking, a lot of those where we're paying vendors coming, because it really breaks up the day. It's great for the students, it gives them other areas. So we would have to take a hard look at some of the enrichment activities that we're doing and do a cost benefit to say, do we not do this and keep them in like classroom settings? So we would really have to go line item by line item and look at areas where we could look to save some money is really all we would be able to do.
And we should also acknowledge that an increase of 10% to families is not a small amount.
It's not. It's not.
It's not.
When was the last time you raised it?
Three years ago.
So the annual increase is three and a third percent.
Right, but it's a sudden hit to people.
It's a sudden hit.
Yeah.
Not having that 50 bucks next month is, it could be...
Yes.
It's a lot. Yeah, that's why I said it's an unenviable task to sit here and ask for it. Yeah.
I wonder, well, we could consider a, you know, I know it's a little complicated, but we could not do it all at once, right? We could do 5% and 5% later.
I mean, we could look at, we could certainly look at the options. We can play that out.
You know, that might make it a little bit better, right? Do it phased, phase it, don't do it all at once.
Let's see what kind of comment we get, public comment we get, and what parents are feeling when they hear about this. It's not all parents, obviously, right? It's a subset of parents who are...
Sure.
Paying for this, and see what comments we get from them, and see what options we have to take.
Well, as a parent who's used it, what would be easier for you? A big increase every three or four years, or a smaller increase every year?
I think this is variable by household, right?
But I'm asking about the Commonwealth household.
I mean, for me, it, I can't answer for anyone else, but me, for me, I like the consistency, right? So tell me what it is, and now I go and I'll, I'll go with it, and I send the check, and they take it. I like the consistency. So for me, I'd rather do it once, have the increase once, but that is different by household. So I wouldn't want to assume that my approach would work for others.
And I would be very much against changing our formula for free and reduced rates to what other towns do. I think that is the, for me, that's the right way to do that.
Yeah, I think perhaps when you talk about later in the agenda, the way that you're going to communicate about this meeting, this might be one of the things that you put in there.
This is one of the things I'm going to include in there.
Yeah, so that families have an opportunity to come and voice their opinion. So before Mr. Galante leaves, I want to tell you a very quick story. So before I came here tonight, I stopped to get something to eat, and I was doing a little work on my computer, and there was another person in the restaurant. And just as she was leaving, she came up to me, she was like, I know you're really busy, but I just wanted to say hello. And I knew exactly who she was. She'd been a parent at Franklin School many years ago when I was a principal. And so we chatted just for a very few more minutes. And then I said to her, you know, how are your children doing? She said, oh, great. One is a dentist, and he's, lives in California, and the other one is in law school. And then she said to me, is Mr. Galante still there? She's like, we were, she was like, I was just getting my daughters ready to go after her second year in law school, and we were going through some pictures, and she was going through some things that she participated in community programs and saying how much she enjoyed it and loved it. And the mother sort of, in her own mind, said, that's because Mr. Galante made that available for you. And the parent asked me specifically about Rick, and if he was still here and still running the program, and how much it meant to her family.
Thank you for sharing that.
It was just...
We don't always hear the good things.
One of those just stories that just happened tonight, and I thought, well, isn't that priceless? He's here tonight. I just have to share that story.
Thank you.
Well, I'll add that the Brown children, over those 20 years you've been here, made a very good and healthy use of the programs, and appreciate that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful night.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you. We're moving on to the student handbook, which we are, we, our original goal at our retreat on August 7th was not, was to only have internal conversations about plans and strategies. We did do a first read of the handbook at that point, because we needed to do a second read of it tonight with the goal of approving it, or to take a vote on it at least, because we want to have it in place and approved before the first day of school. So we got the big old document. If there, anyone needs an extra printout copy of it, Michelle did give us one. I have that here. We have Attorney McAvoy, I believe, joining us.
I am here.
Oh, you're behind me. Oh, hi.
Look, you already told me.
I hope you can't see the back of my head, that bald spot. So we had a few questions get submitted in advance. We'll start with, perhaps, I think mine might be the, an important one to start with, which was, there was a, a lot of the redlining in the document was about the changes to our Title IX policy.
Yeah.
Can you just, like, give us an overview of why that is necessary? And in particular, the line I was very interested in was, in response to current federal, I forgot what I said to Michelle, in terms of like the way the federal, the federal government is interpreting Title IX regulations?
Yeah, so...
I think we need to make, Bill, we think we need to make him louder.
Thank you.
How, how is this?
Perfect.
Okay. So yes, I can absolutely respond to that. I mean, without kind of taking up three, three hours of your time, talking about how Title IX, the Title IX sexual harassment regulations have...
Bill, can you go a little louder? I'm sure it's fine for the families at home, but I can't.
So just, just by way of a quick kind of historical review, prior to 2020, public school districts did not have a specific set of federal regulations to follow when investigating allegations of sexual harassment. In 2020, the first Trump administration issued and implemented a set of Title IX regulations governing how school districts respond to allegations of sexual harassment as defined under Title IX. Those regulations pertain specifically to claims of sexual harassment, not necessarily to claims of sex discrimination in the form of, you know, unequal facilities, things like that. And they created an entirely new process for investigating allegations of sexual harassment by educational entities that receive public funding, both K through 12 schools as well as colleges. So those regulations went into effect in August 2020. All school districts were required to comply as of the 2021 school year. North Annover did comply, and we developed a set of, a Title IX grievance procedure that was fully in accordance with those regulatory requirements. In 2024, the Biden administration issued a new set of Title IX regulations, expanding the coverage of the sexual harassment grievance procedure to also include any claims of sexual, sex-based discrimination, as well as discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation or gender identity. Those regulations went into effect immediately prior to the start of last year. The district did develop a policy and had it in last year's handbook that was compliant with those new requirements. It was a very different procedure we were required to follow last year. It involved a different investigative process, different notice requirements, and had different definitions set forth in those 2024 regulations. In January of this year, 2025, the U.S. District Court for the Eastern District of Kentucky found that the Biden administration had exceeded its authority through the implementation of the 2024 regulatory changes and nullified those regulatory regulations in their entirety. On February 4th, the USD, DOE issued a guidance supporting that U.S. District Court of the Eastern District of Kentucky decision and informing all school districts that moving forward, districts were required to immediately revert to the 2020 regulatory requirements and required grievance procedures. So, that being said, the primary change in the handbook to the Title IX procedure as set forth in the handbook, which you were required to have in your handbook, is that the procedure that I deleted was the 2024 procedure, and I proposed the, the insertion of essentially what was the 2020 procedure with minor changes, just to comply with the U.S. District Court for the Eastern District of Kentucky decision. So, and I can just say to you all, and I did include this in my comments, based upon the rationale provided by the Eastern District of Kentucky, as well as the USDES, DOE, we certainly take the position that the required Title IX grievance procedures, which involve a separate investigator, separate decision-makers, and this really extended investigation process with pauses along the way, are not applicable to claims of pure sex discrimination, nor are they applicable to claims of discriminatory harassment on the basis of sexual orientation or gender identity. Such claims of pure sex-based, sexual, sex harassment, discrimination, or claims of harassment on the basis of sexual orientation or gender identity would now properly be addressed through the district's standard civil rights grievance procedure, which is the same procedure that you use for investigating allegations of discrimination and harassment on the basis of disability and on the basis of, you know, race, religion, and national origin. So that is really the, the, the reason for all the redlining in the Title IX section of the proposed handbook.
So could I ask, with some trepidation, actually, do you think the Trump administration is going to make more changes, probably ones we wouldn't like?
Not, not likely to these, to the 2020 Title IX regulations, no. You know, it's, it's a, it's a very involved process to, to make the, to, to change these federal regulations, and I just, I, I suspect that they're probably fairly satisfied with the 2020 regulations as they stand now that they're back in effect.
Does, um, does the civil rights grievance procedure, which we would use to investigate incidents of discrimination of sex, sexual orientation, and gender identity now, does that offer the same level of safeguard to students as it would have when it was part of the other Title IX under Biden?
Well, I will tell you, it certainly offers the same safeguards to the alleged victims of that type of harassment. It does not provide kind of comparable, you know, quite the level of protection for the accused perpetrator that the 2020 Title IX regulations provide. The 2020 Title IX regulations were very much written with the intent of protecting the accused perpetrator, in some cases, at the expense of the alleged victim. And we are now back implementing those regulations. But I would say that the standard civil rights grievance procedure, and this is the procedure that is, you know, been found by the USDOE to be appropriate for all other forms of discriminatory harassment investigations, you know, provide, definitely provides equal protections for the accused, for the accused victim, and also does provide protections for the accused to ensure that they are given the opportunity to provide testimony and identify witnesses and participate in the process. Quite frankly, the, the application of the standard civil rights grievance procedure to claims of pure sex discrimination or claims of pure harassment on the basis of sexual orientation or gender identity will facilitate the more expeditious investigation of those claims than if they were investigated in accordance with the Title IX grievance procedure, as that is much more burdensome and a much more lengthy process.
Any other questions regarding the Title IX section, before we go into questions of other parts of the handbook?
Could I, Pam, could I just ask, how often does this actually happen in our district?
Barely, if you are like every other district in Massachusetts, probably on a near weekly basis, you are faced with incidents that are potentially, that potentially implicate the Title IX sexual harassment grievance procedures or your civil rights grievance procedures. I, I deal with Title IX issues almost every day in school districts across the state.
And are we going through these procedures of accusation and defense frequently?
Yes.
We are. Okay.
Thank you. To the committee, do we have any other follow-up questions about the Title IX portions?
Could I just throw in here one, one more point on the Title IX regulations?
Please do.
I did, so what I did was, I, I took your previous, the, the, the Title IX grievance procedure that was in your 2324 handbook, and inserted it below the 24 grievance procedures that I deleted. You, the, the one thing I would note is that at the conclusion of the Title IX grievance procedures, we're required to identify the potential Title IX team members across the district, like the people who may conduct an investigation, and the people who will serve as the decision-makers, people who would serve as, as a informal resolution facilitator, and who would serve as the appeals officer. That is all required under the federal regulations. The, the names set forth in the draft I provided you may need to be updated. I just am not sure everyone still occupies the same position.
I feel like the draft that you provided us previously has been updated, as I look at the new one in front of Michelle right now.
Okay.
What page are you on?
I'm on page, I'm on page 39. I can see that the new assistant principal at the middle school has been included now.
Okay, I just, I wasn't part of that process, so if that's happening.
So it's just the name and contact information is, is updated now.
Okay.
Thank you to Pam and Kristin, all for that.
Michelle.
Michelle.
If you all, if I could volunteer as well, you know, one of the questions, Ms. McHugh gave me some questions in advance that people had. You know, I do just want to say that regardless of the changes to the federal regulations and the directives coming from the U.S. Department of Education at this point, Massachusetts law prohibits discrimination against individuals, and students specifically, on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. And, you know, it is my understanding that North Annover, as well as every other district in the Commonwealth right now, is complying with Massachusetts law in that regard. So in terms of issues related to the use of facilities and bathrooms on the basis of a student's identified gender identity, it is, you know, my understanding that you are still allowing students to use a bathroom consistent with their gender identity, as opposed to limiting their access only to bathrooms that are consistent with their assigned sex at birth. And that would be consistent with Massachusetts law, to continue to provide access based on a student's identified gender rather than assigned sex at birth.
So our, just to be blunt...
Yeah.
Are students who are transgender can still use the, the appropriate bathroom as they express, as the way their gender is being currently expressed? Did I say that correctly, Miss Dando?
That is, that is the interpretation of the Commonwealth, of the MasDESE, and that would be our recommendation as council for the district.
And that's what this says.
And that's what's in our handbook.
In our handbook.
Yeah.
And I have, I had a, submitted a related question about athletics. So I presume it's consistent there, too, right? That, that a student that identifies as a particular gender can, can participate in that sport.
It, that, that is correct, and that would also be consistent with the current MIAA rules. I will just, you know, tell you that is, I think, the correct legal interpretation based upon Massachusetts law at this point. I would note, however, that the U.S. Department of Education has indicated an intent to potentially seek to strip federal funding from any district that allows students to participate in athletic, on athletic teams, you know, on any basis other than their assigned sex at birth. But in, of the 70s school districts my office represents, I don't have any that are, that are refusing to allow students to participate in athletics on the basis of their gender identity, as opposed to assigned sex at birth. But it is, it is, as we move forward in the next two or three years, it is, you know, there is... there is a very real possibility that certain districts will be targeted for allowing students to participate on the basis of their gender identity. Just, just as a warning, you know, I certainly don't want, I, my advice is to follow Massachusetts law, but I can, I can kind of candidly say that it is not without any risk from the federal government to do so.
I seem to remember that, that there was a, a letter that we or the superintendent got from Desi saying something like, the federal, the federal government announced its displeasure with some of what was happening in Massachusetts, and the Department of Education and/or the state attorney general stated that since the funds go to the state first and from the state to the districts, the state government for now was gonna assure the federal government that we were in compliance and that any discussions for now would go between the federal government and the state, and not directly between the federal government and us. Do I have that right?
I don't think that we are, we are assuring the federal government, I think we are, my understanding is the Commonwealth is declining to provide that insurance to the federal government at this time. We're taking the position that we simply can't comply with the executive orders and directives from the USDOE without violating Massachusetts state law.
Okay, but then the second part of my question was that they are saying to us and to the federal government that for the time being, the discussion should be between the state government and the federal government, since we are complying with state law?
I would, I, I, I do have a recollection of that position being taken, and I do think that that is the appropriate approach. I don't think that necessarily limits the U.S. Department of Education or the Office for Civil Rights from initiating an independent investigation of a single school district based upon the participation of a student on an athletic team that is not consistent with their assigned sex at birth. I just, it's, the, the U.S. Department of Education has, you know, changed its focus and is aggressively pursuing these issues.
And the threat is-
I don't think that they would feel limited by the position taken in Massachusetts, that, you know, we believe it appropriate for them to be negotiating directly with the state on these points.
And the threat is to all of our federal funding, not just some, right?
Absolutely.
So it's like three and a half million dollars, if I have it right?
Can, but can we go mostly in order of the handbook?
Yeah, that's on page six.
Perfect.
All right, so I'm on page six of the version from last week, unfortunately, but it's Section 2, nondiscrimination and harassment. Section A. So there are two cases here, and this was one of the items we brought up last time when we looked at it, that protections around pregnancy, pregnancy-related conditions, and pregnancy, pregnancy status are deleted from some-
Yep.
-of the paragraphs, but not all. Can you just explain that, and why would we remove those, and can we put them back in?
Well, we suggest removal of them because they were actually specifically included because the 2024 Title IX regulations, which have now been nullified and vacated, specifically required that. I will tell you that, you know, the, the case law supports, and we would certainly take the position that discrimination against an individual on the basis of pregnancy is sex discrimination in violation of Title IX, but the 2024 regulations require that we specifically identify these, these protections on the basis of pregnancy and pregnancy-related conditions in the notices of nondiscrimination, particularly as they pertain to students. But again, those regulations have now been nullified, so we're recommending, you know, ta, removing those previously required statements. I mean, quite frankly, I, I don't think it would be harmful to leave them in if you really were inclined to, but I believe that, that those protections are already covered by the, by the statement that you prohibit discrimination on the basis of sex.
What do my fellow committee members think? I like the idea of having the protect, you know, if they're-
I want them in there.
Okay, then I, if, if anyone else kind of agrees with that, or doesn't feel strongly that they should come out, I, I feel strongly that should be in there, if, as long as there's no negative to us to including those specific protections.
And I, I can also explain that where it does still appear in the, in the corrected version of the handbook, that, that appears under the employee section, and that is a specific requirement with regard to employees. But the application of pregnancy, pregnancy-related conditions, and pregnancy status protections as far as students go, that was a product of the 2024 Title IX regulations, which no longer exist.
So, just want to understand your, the rationale. It's, we, if a student who, who is pregnant or pregnancy-related issue was facing discrimination, they could turn to, they could still file a complaint, but it'd be based on, not pregnancy, but specifically based on sex, correct?
Right, they're being discriminated against.
But the other side could then argue that it's not, they're not covered, like the other sides could then argue that it's not really covered by sex, because it's because of pregnancy, and that's a separate thing.
That wouldn't be a valid argument.
And that's, that's what I worry about.
There's only one, you know, as far as, it's, you're only, you're only discriminating against one gender when you're discriminating, when you're refusing to provide pregnancy spaces, things like that. So that wouldn't be a valid, a valid defense.
I, I like it in there because it just makes it really clear, especially too, with someone who's, if you experience an issue and you're kind of like, hey, was this okay that someone did this to me because of this reason? It's really clear in there that no, it's not, right? So it helps people understand, so.
Why don't you file an amendment and we'll pass it?
Is that, I mean, I guess I'm just-
And I agree, if, if we have, you know, a student looking through this, they may not understand where their protection lies, so it helps make it clear.
Breastfeeding, pregnancy-related, right, like, do we protect our, you know, if, if we have student mothers who need to do those things, right, like, we need to make sure that they're protected in our schools.
And, and, and you see, no, there's no, there's no Attorney McAvoy, there's no, you know, I think you just said that there, you don't see an issue with that.
I don't really see an issue with, with leaving it in if you're inclined to. The one thing I will say is, the term pregnancy-related conditions, that was specifically defined in the 2024 regulations. There's not really, you know, a comparable definition in the current regulations. I mean, I think it's, you know, pretty self-apparent as to what it means. That could be the only issue that arises, though, which is, if someone alleges they're being discriminated on the basis of a pregnancy-related condition, there could be a dispute as to whether, you know, what they're complaining about is actually a pregnancy-related condition.
Pregnancy probably would qualify.
I would be, I've, frankly, I, I think it's worth the risk.
Okay.
Go for it.
Unless you would like to. You can do it. A second.
Okay, I propose an amendment to add into, back into Section 2A, and, under the notice of nondiscrimination, to replace, to, to leave in pregnancy, pregnancy-related conditions, and pregnancy status in the previously removed paragraphs.
Just a procedural question, though, are we in the middle of a motion here, like that?
It's amended, no, oh yeah.
So I think- We're amending the text.
But we don't have a motion.
And then we could take a motion on the entire text that is then.
As, as we've discussed amendments along the way, okay. I'm just wondering if we're following right the-
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah, so we want to change the draft-
Yeah.
-to put pregnancy, pregnancy-related conditions, et cetera-
And pregnancy status.
-to not delete them.
To not delete them, on that page, yeah.
So, so I guess that's a separate, I'm just confused, like, we're not-
Yeah, I'll find, so, our draft has them deleted. We are, Ms. Cor, Ms. Cormier made a motion to not delete them and to include them in the language of the handbook that we will then, at the end of this discussion, then approve.
Okay, so we're not approving it yet?
No, like, we, what we want to keep-
There may be others, we may have others.
Maybe have others, right?
Right now, we want, we, no, we should vote on whether or not we, we want to keep it in a, the version that we will then approve.
So this is a motion on its own?
Yes.
Okay.
That you do not want to delete it.
All right.
So I, I seconded it. Is there any other discussion? Great, Mr. Moskowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, we are going to keep in pregnancy, pregnancy-related illness conditions-
And pregnancy status.
And pregnancy status.
And I'm sorry, Kelly made the motion, Joe seconded?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. My next question might be out of-
Sorry, I just, this is on the same line, because you'd kind, you'd kind of touched on this a little bit, on how this would work in for breastfeeding mothers, that they're-
Is that, this is student, oh, right, I was gonna say, if that's employees, that's different. This is for student handbook, I caught myself.
If there's other protections for, for those, those students that are in here, or that, or do we need to add protections?
Do we need to, to term breastfeeding?
Right.
And that, would that be, I guess it's not a, you're not pregnant anymore when you're breastfeeding, so it's not a pregnancy-related, yeah, is that, was that covered, is that a pregnancy?
That would be covered under pregnancy-related.
Related, okay.
That's a pregnancy-related condition.
I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
That we do all the right things, yeah, okay.
And, and I will just tell you all that, you know, the 2024 regulations had an entire section on this that is, you know, now been nullified, but governing the requirement that you provide, you know, safe and sanitary and private space for, for students to, you know, breastfeed their child, things like that. And those, all of those regulatory requirements are, have been eliminated after being in effect for about six months.
That was at a time when the courts thought that it was important that presidents be limited from making excessive regulations.
Oh, we go down a rabbit hole.
Yes. Continuing on in order.
All right, so I don't, in order, I have one more, but it's not till page 36, if someone else has it before that.
I'm beyond 36, on my next one, so.
All right.
Anyone before page 36?
Fortunately, I didn't make notes about, well, the, the submitted questions, are we going to cover those separately, or should we bring them up as we go?
Bring them up as we go, and mostly in order.
All right, so I can't remember where bullying is.
Oh, that's my section, it's around page 34. Bullying, bullying prevention intervention.
So, two questions about bullying. Can we start with Mr. Brown, and we'll come back to Mrs. Cormier?
Perfect.
All right, so, there's, I think this is really a typo. There's two paragraphs in a row about consequences, oh no, it's not a typo, sorry. The paragraph regarding retaliation does not include the potential of expulsion, but the following paragraph about bullying and retaliation does. So-
Could you just direct me to the page that you're looking at?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to-
In the old version, it was version 33.
Which section?
Page 33, section I, and in, under A, right to be free from bullying, that's the whole se, there's a I, which comes up kind of fast. And it's reporting bullying and/or retaliation, I think is the section Mr. Brown is in.
Yes.
No. Can you just show me on your page?
So it's, it looks like this, so it's 31, right to be free from bullying, that's sort of the section I think we're in.
Thank you. According by staff, spawning to bullying.
And where do you see the retaliation?
I'm just having, I'm having a little, I was trying to locate this before, and I just, let's see, when behavior starts, cyberbullying, it was included.
Right to be free from bullying?
Yeah, right to be, is the section, right to be free from bullying is the section title.
Yep.
So on page?
I, I see that on page 47 of the revised-
Thank you.
I don't see the consequences section.
Page 47, okay.
Page 47?
And then you said, and you said, in the, section 47, then report-
I, I see, well, I see it on page 48. It is the, paragraph at the bottom, beginning with administrators and supervisors make clear to students and staff that bullying and/or retaliation will not be tolerated, won't be grounds for disciplinary action.
Right, I was just wondering why expulsion was not included.
That was an oversight, I apologize for that. I eliminated expulsion in the paragraph above, I did not see that it reappeared in the paragraph below, but the word "and expulsion after long-term suspension" should be removed. The retaliation is a school rules violation, the limitations on the district's authority are governed under Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 37H and 3/4, which prohibits the expulsion of students for school rules violations other than possession of a dangerous weapon, possession of a controlled substance, or assault of a staff person, or conviction of a felony event, so, "and expulsion" should be removed from that paragraph.
All right, so for consistency, although-
Well, it's, it's illegal to expel from bullying, that's the Mass Law.
Just the way it is, okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And with regard to the next question that I was given on the superintendent language, I have struck that in the, my version of the-
Oh, okay, yeah, because it looked, it was weird, it was like sort of describing the document that we're reading, right?
Right, right, because it came from your handbook, I mean, see, essentially, what, what Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 37O, which is the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Act, requires, is that you include the, the student-specific portions of your bullying plan in your student handbooks, like, as far as how to report, what happens next, what's prohibited, and generally, what districts do is they kind of, largely, will cut and paste a majority of their bullying plan into the handbook, and what I, that sentence, which I struck, that, that's simply a carryover from language, it's probably still in your existing bullying plan.
All right, so it should be, it should be struck?
That does not need to be there.
Okay.
And I also recommended the striking the sentence where it says, "The principal of each building will be responsible for handling all complaints by students alleging harassment, including bullying," that, that is, should not be, that is not accurate. Under Title IX, that was not necessarily permitted, and that's not necessarily consistent with your grievance procedures, simply because the word harassment is used.
Okay.
Mrs. Cormier?
All right, so, page numbers are gonna be fun. So, it's on page 35 in the old section.
I, I do not have the old it.
Which is the section?
It's the section, it's still in bullying, it's the, the header, it's responding to a report of bullying or retaliation.
Okay.
It's Roman numeral two, responding to a report of bullying or retaliation.
Yes, okay, I'm looking at it.
All right, so paragraph one, it's the second paragraph in the section, and it starts with, "Responses to promote safety may include," and you've added in altering the targets or perpetrator seating.
Yep.
Why did we add in changing the target? Why?
That, that is a possible intervention when, on initial response to bullying. I mean, the reality is, is, you know, generally, an alleged perpetrator is entitled to due process as well. They're entitled to a fair investigation, a determination as to whether they committed the act of bullying that's being complained of. So as far as, you know, trying to ensure a safe and secure environment for all students involved, at least on an initial basis while you're investigating it, there should be some allowance for offering the target the opportunity to change their seating in the classroom, as opposed to having only a provision for the perpetrator to be directed to do so.
Okay, so this allows that to happen, not takes at the target, is the one that has to get moved.
Right.
All right, what about just, in keeping consistent with that, where it says identifying a staff member who will act as a safe person for the target, could we also have whether that's a safe person for the perpetrator? So-
You, you could if you wanted to.
Could we add that in? Because rather than, you know, if we think about the alleged target, rather than them having to have a, a bathroom monitor, why not, wouldn't the perpetrator, alleged perpetrator need the bathroom monitor? Let's not put it all on the alleged target, let's be, at least give ourselves the ability to be, to judge the situation, and should the alleged target get the safe person, or should the alleged perpetrator get the safe person? I would just like to have that added in, since we're, you know, we're doing it to allow seat movement for both, why not allow for all of the aspects?
In that same paragraph, I would like to see the order of perpetrator and target switched.
I like that, that was-
Alphabetical and other.
What do people think about the safe person? That, I think it's, in, just a very practical example, a bathroom monitor, right, it's a practical example, like, rather than the target, alleged target having to be, oh, well, you know, we'll send someone, we'll watch you when you go to the bathroom, make sure you're safe. No, why not have the alleged perpetrator, if they're gonna go outside of the classroom, they have someone with them.
I, I mean, I will just volunteer for you, that we're talking about voluntary supportive measures here, so, you know, it's, it's one thing to say to the alleged perpetrator, hey, you know, Steven, you know, would you be more comfortable while we're investigating- you know, Steven, you know, would you be more comfortable while we're investigating this investigation if we had someone accompany you to the bathroom so that there are, you know, no further allegations against you? That's a very different scenario than saying, hey, Steven, while this investigation is ongoing, this staff member is going to come to the bathroom with you every day. That's not really a supportive measure. That's an interim sanction. So what we're talking about here in supportive measures is saying to the, the alleged target, you know, what can we do to restore your sense of safety while we look into this? But, you know, it is, it is a perilous road to go down, you know, at least at the outset before, um, you know, the perpetrator's afforded due process with imposing restrictions and sanctions, um, that limit the perpetrator and, and, you know, classify them as supportive measures.
I understand what you're saying. I'll be honest, I don't like it cause I think it puts more on the alleged target. But I, I understand what you're saying.
It's a safety measure. So typically when we're meeting with a family, if you're the tar, if that's the alleged target, typically that family is looking for a safety measure for themselves. It also says that the principal or designated could take additional steps. It doesn't mean that there may not be somebody supporting the target, but it, you're typically putting in safety measures while you're doing the investigation for the target. Yeah.
These aren't consequences that are adjudicated afterwards. It's during the investigation.
Yeah. I, I get it, but it, it also just puts more onus on the alleged target again to have, makes them different one more time, makes them stand out one more time when there's been a, I get the.
They're typically looking, I, I understand what you're saying, but I think that typically when we're offering safety measures, it's something that a family member is, is looking for a safe person that that student can go to in the event they, that they think something is happening. It's usually identifying someone that they feel is their safe person as opposed to someone who's going to escort them to the bathroom. In some ways, it just helps identify who that is.
And, and the only other thing I would mention is from kind of a practical perspective, if you require, um, you know, basically, at, at least at the outset, equal treatment of the target and alleged perpetrator as far as supportive measures, that is going to necessitate a prior initial notification of the alleged target and their family of the ongoing investigation, which is not something we necessarily recommend. Parents do not necessarily have the right under the statute to know when we've initiated an investigation of bullying by their child. They have the right to, if bullying substantiated, they have the right to notification of the outcome. But in my experience as an attorney representing, you know, districts across the state, um, you know, oftentimes if you notify the, uh, parents of the alleged perpetrator at the outset of the investigation, that can impede your ability to investigate because they will say to you, you are not to talk to my child without, uh, an attorney present. Or it will enable the alleged perpetrator to, you know, quickly gather up support among potential witnesses, um, that may not be compliant with the investigation. So, and if you sit down with the, the alleged target and his or her family and talk about supportive measures, when you're talking to the alleged perpetrator about supportive measures, you would need to afford them like the same opportunity to have their parent or guardian present during that discussion. That would be my concern, to be honest.
I understand, but I don't like it. But I'll move on. Okay. All right. That was mine.
Anything else in the bullying section?
The pre-submitted comment I had about the numbering seems to be corrected in this version. So.
Great.
I think we're, I think we're okay.
Moving on to the next parts. After bullying, we get into, um, well, we get into acceptable use policy, but there was nothing changed. Then we get into behavior. Um, there's a section, oh, um, I had a question about responsibility for appearance at the end of, uh, on P, on the, it's on the new page 71, see responsibility for appearance. And this is coming from my own son. When we say, can you give us, what do you mean legally by the term disruptive to the school environment? And how much leeway do teacher, individual teachers have in interpreting that term in, in their classrooms?
Well, individual, you know, it should really fall ultimately on, on the building administrator to make the final call on dress code violations. Um, but it disruptive of the environment is, you know, wearing, wearing clothing which, you know, causes upset among their classroom peers. An example I can give you is the case out of Ludlow from two years ago where the student appeared on two separate occasions with a T-shirt stating there are only two genders. Uh, the student was not allowed to wear that shirt in school. That case was litigated all the way up to the First Circuit Court of Appeals and the Court of Appeals found that, you know, a, a, a clothing which, uh, contains messages which denigrate the, um, you know, certain subgroups of individuals is disruptive and may be prohibited by the school.
What if it's something more benign like, um, a teacher in their classroom doesn't want kids to wear hats?
I, I think the school district has the absolute ability to restrict a student from wearing most hats. You know, in some cases, if a student has a disability-related accommodation, a 504 plan or an IEP, uh, providing for the wearing of a hat for whatever reason, you'd have to, the teacher has no authority to prohibit it. And I would also, you know, always remind people about the Crown Act, um, so, which prohibits discrimination on the basis of, uh, headwear or hairstyles commonly associated, uh, with, with race. Um, so, you know, certain types of, you know, religious-based, uh, headwear or, you know, for lack of a better term, things like a do-rag, um, that, that would be protected under the Crown Act. But in most cases, the district can, can prohibit the wearing of hats within the school building if you're so inclined. I have, I have a number of districts that do. And even if you permit, even if you permit hats, hat-wearing within the building, I, I would, I, I mean, I would suggest to you that an individual teacher in their classroom, unless the student has an accommodation or unless it's kind of religious-related headwear or racially-related headwear, uh, have, would have the authority to direct the student in their classroom to remove their hat until the class is over.
Can you, like, what would be the reason, like, I'm just looking for like the reasoning why that would be considered a disruptive to the learning environment? Yeah.
Student, you can't, the teacher can't monitor where the student's eyes are, if their hat is pulled down low, um, things like that. The hat could be a distraction for fellow students, things like that.
I find it, frankly, I find it dubious and I, I've never enjoyed that rule.
Well, I, I will say from personal experience, you know, hats, hats in the school setting can be problematic, particularly for incidents that happen in the hallway. It can be very difficult to identify students on your, on your video recording system if they're wearing hats.
I've seen situations unfortunately where there are some hats that are extremely expensive and they become very popular and some kids have them and some kids don't. And it becomes a distraction in the classroom because some are not able to afford those certain types of hats, especially in the elementary setting.
I, 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 I hear what you're saying. I, I disagree. I think it's, yeah, I, I personally had to be the one looking at the cameras, trying to identify kids doing bad things. It's hard. And I feel like it's also making a rule when you have, for most of the kids, once a few of them being the pains. Um, so that's my side. I just wanted to bear understanding how it, how it becomes a disrupt, disruptive to the, to the environment. Because then the, the parent handbook for the middle school does give some very specific dress and appearance requirements for kids that are different than what they are for the high school. I just want to make sure that those two things aren't in conflict with each other.
Before we go farther.
Yep.
I went slightly backwards. I missed one. Um, in the, in the students with disabilities section?
Yes.
Well, in my version is page 40.
Which section?
It's, um, students, rights of students with disabilities.
That's in the bullying section. So, yep.
Yeah. Um, just a question. The compliance coordinator paragraph, it doesn't specify who that is, but a lot, in a lot of other places in the document, we are specifying who, who the individual people are.
It's page 57.
Yeah. My version is page 40. So, um, I mean, are we, is that okay? Or should we be more specific there?
You know, I, you, you do need to publicly identify your ADA coordinator, your 504 coordinator, your Title IX coordinator, and your civil rights grievance coordinator in district publications. Um, I just, in that section, that was an exist, I mean, that's, that, that Title II of the ADA summary is not necessarily something that every district has in their handbooks. I mean, I wouldn't necessarily tell you to take it out. Um, it is pretty specific. That's why we added in.
It names who it is. It says the Assistant Superintendent of Schools for Teaching and Learning.
Yeah.
Oh, it just didn't put a person's name. I'm sorry.
Oh, you want to put in Kristinando?
Well, good, only because I, other places here, it does have specific people's names, right? So shouldn't we be consistent?
I don't think you need to be. I think.
I think we're good.
I think you're fine.
As long as it's done by title? Okay. I guess we only have one.
There is only one.
There's only one.
The one, the only.
The one and only Kristinando.
Okay.
Anything else in the disciplinary section? Um, most, and just in general, Attorney McAvoy, these are all in compliance with relevant state laws, 37h and a half, et cetera?
Oh, absolutely. Uh, 37h, 37h and a half, 37h and three quarters. Those are the three statutes that govern discipline, uh, in public school settings across the country.
Can I draw our attention then to sect, uh, section six, high school student disciplinary consequences? There is a larger paragraph on there. It's on my page 81 about cell phone and personal electronic devices that we're adding in.
Well, I have one before that though.
Okay.
Going in order. Um, so going back a little bit from there, uh, under the definitions of moderate rule violations, part C, uh, since section, um, four, uh, I guess this is under, oh, oh, okay. This is under four, elementary school. I see.
Yeah.
Cause I, I was wondering why striking another student, but now I see it's elementary school.
Yeah. We separate out elementary, middle, and high school behavior consequences.
Okay. That makes a little more sense now.
Yeah.
Like I would think in the high school section, that absolutely should be in there. Right? Um, I wonder if it is, but.
Actually, my recommendation was not only that it's in there, but it be, it be identified as a major rules violation, not a moderate. You know, a staff, a, a student striking a, a staff member, that it's about as serious a violation as a student can commit in a school.
A student doing what? Sorry.
Striking a staff member.
Yes. I just got, you got muffled for a second for me. Sorry.
Okay. So my recommendation was that this should be identified as a, as a, as a major offense.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry, Joe. I didn't realize that was part of the elementary.
No, that is absolutely fine. This is, we need, we need to make sure we, everyone understands it. So it's perfectly acceptable. Uh, cell phone. So this is a proposed change to the handbook for, is this a new rule then or a new policy for the high school?
This is a procedure for the high. School that they'd like to add in that they're using. It's on page 81 of the new, the new version. No cell phone, personal electronic devices used in the classroom for high school.
What's the section letter?
It's in six, high schools.
Yeah. We got that one. And within six, there's A, discipline, B, impermissible.
It's in impermissible conduct. I don't think you had it in the one that you saw this summer. This is new that the high school has just added in.
How do we, I don't have that. Is that?
Uh, Kristen, can you project it? Page 81. Thank you. Scroll, 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 scroll.
Just keep scrolling.
So as she's scrolling, um, you may or may not.
It's 81. She has the right one. That's where I went to get it.
No, that's gone to concussion. I think, I have, we have longer with all the red lines.
If you go, I think you have the old, maybe if you refresh your agenda.
Sure.
I'm showing it on page 1.
Me too. Now.
Is it the one that's?
Well, just her version didn't have any of the red lines in it. So that might adjust the, the page numbering.
I think Ms. McQ and you, agenda linked to both the 24, 25 handbook as well as the proposed.
This should be.
25, 26 with the changes. Could be the explanation.
Oh, you went past it already. Yeah. You straight, it's before this.
It's before this? It won't be in hers then if this is the summer one, but.
No, it just doesn't have the red line.
There's just a few changes.
Keep, okay. It is, it might be after that. I'm sorry. I was wrong.
That's okay. Further?
Maybe we just do a control F.
Yeah. What's the word?
No cell phone. Yeah.
Keep going down now. That's the middle school.
It does appear after high school disciplinary consequences.
That's the middle school one?
Keep going. Keep going.
Keep going.
It's still middle school. Keep going.
There it is.
Keep going. Where it's red. There you go.
Bam. Page 60.
All right.
So this is what the high school would like to add in.
This is the procedure they'd like to add in. As you know, the, um, the state of Massachusetts is looking at a, a cell phone policy statewide. It's passed the House Senate. Um, so while we're waiting for that, this is the procedure that they have put in place, um, for this year, instead of us creating a policy and then there being a new state policy.
So is each teacher going to provide a designated classroom container?
Yep.
So what do we give them? A milk crates or like a?
Uh, no. So what they're, a lot of them are using our, uh, shoe bags. So the things that you'd hang your shoes in, they're hanging in the classrooms.
They hang them up in the front.
That's what Andover's doing.
Or, or in a backpack. So a student can go, no, I don't want to give you my phone. I'm putting it in my backpack. So this creates a little bit of that, could potentially create a little friction. But I guess as long as they put it in their backpack, that's fine. Okay.
Is this something that the high school parents have looked over and been able to comment on?
They, this was what they were working on all of last year and they had a, a group that was working on it. They went to the student council. They brought students in to, um, give comment on it. Um, so they did have an advisory all last year, um, and this is what they've settled on.
And just to be clear, I know, I know what some of the arguments for keeping them will be. In the case of an emergency, a parent can call the school, the main office and someone will pick up, correct?
Correct.
And in the case of an emergency, that a student needs a parent, they can go down to the main office and call the parent, correct?
Correct.
Great. And, and main office can connect from the phones for parents that call to different areas in the, to different classrooms.
Yes. But with this policy, the students will still have the phones with them. It's either, they're, it's either going to be in that container or it'll be in their backpack. So the students aren't without their phones, right?
But with, but if it's out and in class, then they, it can then be dealt with by a teacher with a level one infraction.
Yes. But, but in case, like you were saying, in case it never merge, I'm needing to read, you know, the students, the students aren't going along with their phone with this policy, right? Cause they can look at it between classes and passing. So how long, you know?
In an emergency, they have it.
It's, yeah. It's not, you know, it's five feet at the front of the class or in their backpack next to them.
I could tell you as a person that's boots on the ground in high schools, you know, now, it, this will be very helpful to the, to the teachers. Very, very helpful because now, you know, it's an attitude thing, right? You know, I'm, I'm, I'm real strict with this one, right? I just, it drives me crazy. But, but it'd be nice to have the backup of the policy.
The faculty worked with students and administration in developing?
Correct.
This? Personally, I think it's actually too, I think you could go further and still be okay.
I agree.
But.
It's a good step.
It is.
If I could offer a suggestion, I, I would suggest to you all that if you were going to go with the language that appears in this policy, um, as far as allowed use goes, my recommendation would be to add an additional sentence, um, saying the audio or video recording, uh, you know, within the school building without the explicit consent of the subject of the recording is prohibited.
Is that in the acceptable, you know, this would be the place to put that.
I think you would put it here because you are saying you can use your cell phones as you want in the hallway, but without any limitation being cited and, you know, And, you know, based on my experience as a school attorney, it is, you know, you have two issues there. One is, you know, the surreptitious recording of other students and staff people, which is a felony offense in Massachusetts, using their personal devices, as well as the recording of, the video recording of particularly other students within the school building, and the distribution of those recordings, you know, as part of a, you know, ongoing campaign of bullying or discriminatory harassment.
Will you add that as a comment into the section, so that when we, I'll review that with the high school principal?
Well, we're going to vote.
Oh, you're going to vote, that's fine, yeah, so just add it in.
If, if we wa, if that will...
Yeah, if you agree.
I, so I'd like to make a motion to include Attorney McAvoy's language concerning video recordings. Thank you. Ms. Sam seconds, any discussion? Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Ms. Sams?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Emphatic yes, yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes.
Great. Is there any, with cellphones, are students allowed to use the school Wi-Fi with their phones? Is there any consideration that, does that matter here, or is that? Do they connect to the Wi-Fi with their phones? Does that, I don't know if that would matter at all.
I don't think they can.
I don't think you can.
No, okay.
I don't think they can either.
Okay.
Well, they have the public Wi-Fi, it doesn't work.
Anything else in term, in the discipline section?
It's really clear, I remember when we looked at the middle school about what happens with, with an infraction for, with cellphone policy. This seems a little looser. Was that by intent? It's not quite as clear to me what happens if a student doesn't listen. What is it, just in terms of backing up the teachers? What, what happens the first time a student refuses to put their phone in the container or their backpack?
The teacher gets to do something.
No, see, it's not listed there, it says will result in appropriate school consequences and discipline process will apply. So, I was there when they were talking about it, I think they do have a first warning, second warning, something in effect.
So, there is something, like, I know the middle school was, if I remember, it was...
This is a, they're, so the high school is a little bit behind the middle school, the middle school, the high school, this is, they, they are working on what, that's why they're calling it a procedure right now, rather than a policy, they're really trying to work with the students about, let's, we all agreed on this together, and here's where we are, and we're going to try, and we're going to be really, they're getting the teachers to be really consistent about having the kids put them in those holders, or making sure that they're not, that they're in the backpack. So, it's, I think it's a phase, I mean, like, like, we're, they're working on right now being very consistent in holding everybody, teachers and students, to this. So, in the past, it was optional, so some teachers had the holders, some students put them in, sometimes they didn't, sometimes they still had the AirPods on, so they're making, they're being very intentional about making this part of the procedure of the classroom.
But it is going to be after night policy.
What?
But if it's in here, after night, it is then policy.
Yep.
So, I guess it's one of those things, making sure it's really clear what happens if you don't follow the policy. Because I think that's, it just seems like for the T, I'm just thinking of those, yeah. I've talked to a few of my friends, their teachers, trying to deal with this in their own classrooms, and it's very, how successful they are, how much time they waste dealing with this, really depends on the backup.
And the consistency.
And the consistency, and then just people knowing what the implications are, or not.
I'm wondering if it'll fall under, like...
Level one, level two, like the idea that lack of compliance with the expectations will result in appropriate school consequences, so it looks like level one would be your first warning, level two, it's not specifically spelled out, but I feel like, but we could, you could interpret it that way, I feel.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and the teachers were okay with that, I guess, because this was all agreed with the teachers, so they're, they were fine with it being a phased.
Teachers are, what teachers are understanding this year is that that is their responsibility to enforce this policy within their classroom. It's no longer a choice as a classroom teacher, whether or not you want to have your students put their phones in the holder, or leave them on their desk, or in their person. Now, the expectation is, is that all teachers will enforce the policy.
One of the struggles sometimes we teachers have is that if I am trying to enforce something in my classroom, and you're not doing it in your classroom, then it becomes a, it becomes a hole in that students will then take advantage of, well, this teacher doesn't care.
If you go to the high school right now, they have signs, posters everywhere, they have made it very clear what the new cellphone policy is, and they spent a lot of time with their staff the last two days talking about this, talking about the need for it. Department chairs had a specific meeting, so that they will reiterate it with their department, you know, the teachers that they work with.
Okay, so you, you think this is the right, you think this is the right approach for now in the high school? This is our right for, this is the right approach for now to start?
I think so.
Okay.
I think they spent a year studying it, looking at lots of places, and as I said, we have a potential statewide law that's going to come into effect, and we're just waiting to see if that passes.
Thank you.
Anything else in the disciplinary section? Anything in the appendices, starting with the graduation requirements? I feel like there was something in here, I can't find it now, about students opting out of things curriculum based on the most recent, do you remember where that was?
Yeah, it's, it would be under religious opt-outs.
Do you know what page that's on?
I will find it here, I'm just searching it, let's see. It is on page sixty-four.
I'm sorry, I missed that earlier, I thought it was at the end.
Yeah, it's on, it's on page sixty-four.
So, it's right after the, it's the right of freedom of expression section in the, just after the pledge of allegiance.
So, I can explain this there, you may, or you all may or may not be aware, but the U.S. Supreme Court at the beginning of July issued a decision, the matter of Mahmoud B. Taylor, in which the court found that a parent's right to free exercise of their religion under the First Amendment, and to raise their child in a manner consistent with their religious beliefs, is paramount, even within the school setting, and what the court directed was that parents be able to opt their children out of required elements of the curriculum that may conflict with their sincerely held religious beliefs. This is a significant new Supreme Court decision that was not consistent with prior precedent on these issues, particularly in Mass, in the First Circuit. We have case law on this that has been completely upended. The Mass, the Mass Association of School Committees had held a roundtable meeting with council representing districts across the state, and ultimately, the MASC formulated this notification paragraph, which, and recommended that this be included in all handbooks, at least going forward for purposes of this year. There is going to, you are going to be needing to, to issue kind of a more detailed statement about it as the year progresses, it's just, this is all so fresh and so hard to interpret that districts really are not in the position to do so at this point. But it is a very significant change to the law. It will, it will cover things not only like, you know, discussions about same-sex families, gender identity, but could actually impact upon, you know, your world history classes to the extent, or biology to the extent that you're talking about evolution, parents will have the right to opt their children out of those portions of the curriculum.
Can we just... So, I understand that last sentence, it's not that we can't include those things, it's that parents can opt their children out of those particular...
You have to, you have to make the information that it's included available to parents in the form of, you know, making your curriculum and materials, you know, posting them on your website, or giving parents the ability to come in and review them. You can still engage in that instruction, but you cannot require children to participate in that instruction to the extent that the instr, the information being conveyed is inconsistent with a family's sincerely held religious beliefs.
Any other questions for Attorney McAvoy? Nope. Thank you, sir, for your time, I'm waiting for this, we ran behind, and thank you for fielding all of our questions, really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I will just warn, I will just say to you all that I, you are going to be hearing more about this, this Supreme Court decision as the year progresses. It is going to become a, a significant issue for school districts across the state. And then, the last note I would make for you is, we did recommend the inclusion of a Protection of People Rights Amendment statement, which is also consistent with this Supreme Court decision. You may all have read this, the news yesterday about the U.S. Department of Education investigating certain public school districts in Massachusetts for administering surveys without allowing students to opt out of them. That is the type of conduct that's covered under the PPRA. You are required to provide an annual PPRA notice, and in our opinion, the, the most efficient way to do that is through including a statement about the PPRA in your handbook. And it, it will be something moving forward that the U.S. Department of Education and likely Problem, the Problem Resolution Services for DESE are going to be, you know, fairly aggressively looking for in, in all district public, in, in handbook publications. So, we would, we very strongly recommend that you include that.
Thank you.
And that, that's in here, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Last page.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the committee have any other comments to make? Just to remind us, we made two adjustments to the language of the handbook as we went through. The first being from, about pregnancy and pregnancy-related conditions, et cetera, that we are not deleting that. The second one, what was our second one?
Adding a...
A sentence to...
Adding the sentence to the cellphone.
Cellphone stuff.
About video recording. So, the chair would entertain a motion that would include accepting, approving this with those included language adjustments.
Yes, Mr., yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we adopt the Student Rights and Responsibilities, the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, as amended by the two previous motions made in this meeting.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Any final comments, thoughts, questions?
So, this will go on the website, students don't get a hard copy of it, is that right? They just, it's just on the website?
We do not. It is available, and then principals will send it out in their newsletters as well.
I imagine if a family wanted to...
Yep, if the family wants to request one.
They could get a printed copy by request. It is available electronically.
And it'll be available in other languages by request?
Yep.
Thank you, moving on to a vote, Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Sams?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
And the chair is voting no, so it passes four to one. Thank you. Moving, we're only one hour and seven minutes behind, sorry.
That's it?
Moving on to some announcements and community events from various people, Superintendent.
Just real quick, we have the first day of school for students coming up on September second. Our grades one through twelve, we'll be welcoming them back, that's next Tuesday.
Can you take them sooner?
No, Mr. Hicks, we cannot.
You voted on that.
You voted on that.
I would like to amend that, can you take them tomorrow?
No, no, thank you. On, this, not December, on September third, which is Wednesday, we'll be welcoming our kindergarten students back, and on September fourth, which is a Thursday, we'll be welcoming our preschool students back. Or, not back, because they're just starting.
Right. And the kindergarten is different, because kindergarten calendar requirements in the state are different than...
They don't have to do the same amount of days, correct. On Tuesday...
They don't have to do what?
They don't have to do the required...
Oh, of the days.
They have different counterrolls.
Right, right.
So, on Tuesday, the kindergarten students come for orientation, they start on Wednesday. On Wednesday, the preschool students come for orientation, they start on Thursday.
Amazing, and you've included awesome calendar.
The calendar's on the back somewhere.
Yep, I would like just to make note of that for families out there. We have made an adjustment, we've mentioned this a couple of times, but the administration made an adjustment to the PD schedule. We are not doing bi-weekly or twice-monthly early releases for an hour and a half-ish time. We're now doing once monthly early release at, much earlier.
Correct, and the calendar that's on the school website is the correct calendar. There was a time during the school, during the summer, that there was an incorrect date listed, but the correct calendar is on the school website, and principals will send this out in their publications to families as well.
So, on those days, just for instance, the middle school gets out, it used to get out like one oh five, now they would get out once a month, like at eleven oh five. So, it's a longer time, but better use of time for, for you, and hopefully easier for families. Awesome, community chats?
Yes, so...
I think that's you.
No, it is, I'm getting that, I'm sorry. Community chats, kind of, we have the school committee, there are three of us, I think it's myself, Mr. Moskovich, Mr. Brown are going to be at the farmer's market on September, something a little bit different, on September twenty-eighth, that's a Sunday. Ryan will be there for the entire time, just having a typical community chat, kind of informal. Any, you know, there will be two of us present, so anyone having questions, you know, comments, things that they want to talk about related to the schools, please stop by. We'll be able to enjoy the wonderful Northlander's Farmer Market. And then, we are also looking about going to the Fall Festival as well, more to come on that if we can get our table.
I think we're really wait-listed.
Yep, and then, we are, just so people know, we are, we are still working on, we are going to continue the process of community chats, we, well, attendance varied quite a bit, we are hearing that they are useful, so we do want to, we are going to keep those going. But more to come on schedule, we just have to work on scheduling, so we're going to try to do those throughout the year, different times, if people have, like, a different time, I think we tried to mix it around different days of the week, to try to catch different people on their schedules, but we'll continue to do those.
And Tribe Board Chairs Meeting?
Yep, absolutely, so the Tribe Board Chairs Meeting, so this, kind of in the, the vein of good communication and, and collaboration, one of the things that I had learned in our, in school committee training is towns that felt they were well-functioning, one that they, one thing that they had was a frequent, frequent, or at least recurring meeting of all of the Tribe Board Chairs. So, the Chair and Vice Chair of the School Committee, the FinCom, and Select Board, having routine meetings of just the Chairs to make sure that they had collaboration and were talking with each other. Obviously, since there are only two members of each board there, nothing can be deliberated, there are no decisions that can be made, the Chairs are just there on their own. But we started doing those about a month, I think it was about a month ago now, we had our first one in my living room, where we, the six of us, so five, I think one, one of the Chairs was missing, but just having discussions of making sure what's important, at least to those members, to the Chairs of all those boards. So, we're going to keep that going, just kind of on the vein of making sure that we continue to have great collaboration, and can only continue to build on that. So, as we have conversations, we'll report, each of the groups will report back in their individual committee meetings, so I, we already, I reported out to this group in our last meeting, it wasn't televised, though, but really what we talked about in our last meeting is that all of the Boards thought it was a good idea to keep doing it, that it was worth their time, that collaboration and communication was important, and that we're going to try to do it, if not monthly, pretty close, kind of repeating really based on what, what's happening and the needs that we need to have to collaborate.
Thank you.
That's all right.
Superintendent Lethrop, around the district.
Excellent. Here it comes. So, yeah, here's our Superintendent Report, this was yesterday, some of this is yesterday, this was our welcome back assembly, our welcome back greeting with all of our staff members up top. We had some fun this year, and some of our school mascots were able to join us.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it was great, we're going to work on getting a mascot there from the middle school and high school next year. And then, on the upper right-hand corner is Lisa Bernard, she's the school committee inductee to the Hall of Fame from last year, she came and gave a beautiful keynote speech. And then, the bottom picture are all of our new staff members in Northlander Republic Schools, along with their mentors for this year, so it's a nice way to welcome us back, it's great. So, just a little bit of recognition, so these are our school, our Northlander Middle School School Nurses, Dana Woodworth, Jess Wolfe, and Kathleen Pease, along with our Director of Health Services, Shoaib Arzak, and our Director of Social Emotional Learning, Michelle O'Leary. They were at National Night Out, they are doing some community outreach and support, they were sharing the night's closet clothes and giving information, and they were very successful at, at National Night Out. Our curriculum team, who was led by one of our new curriculum directors, not new to the district, but new to the role, Joel Clark, he facilitated the Eureka Square Training for our principals, our assistant principals, and our facilitators of collaborative inquiry, we like to call them FCIs around here, these are our teacher leaders, so he did a train-the-trainer model for us. See? We had a team of administrators, Tiffany Goddard, Nicole Riedelski, so Tiffany's at the Brad Street, Nicole is at Franklin, Deb Holman, our high school principal, Scott Young, assistant principal, Olin Grantham, assistant principal, Carolyn Beasley, assistant principal at the middle school, George Gonzalez, principal, and Augur, she's the new assistant principal at the middle school, we have a chance to meet her, and Carol Larkum, one of our curriculum directors. They attended the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Instructional Leadership Institute, which focused on what you see there, high-quality instructional material, instruction, deeper learning, creating affirming and supportive classrooms, and building equity-centered systems. They said it was a very, very valuable three days. They have, came back with lots of information that they're going to be sharing with the broader, with the larger administrative group. We want to give a huge thank you to our custodians on the maintenance workers and the DPW for ensuring our schools and grounds are, were ready to be welcomed. Those happen to be some pictures of, on the bookends are our custodians at the Sergeant School, who had a large amount of work to do between accepting, they had the largest amount of new staff joining their building, and they had several moves throughout the building. And then the middle picture are, so that is at Franklin School. So the very first picture you see is what we used to have as the preschool playground. Now, I will tell you that that playground was put in when I was the principal at Franklin School, so that was somewhere around 2008, 2007, 2008. When the preschool left, the toys sort of were taken away, and the area has become very overgrown. Principal Riedelski and the PTO and some of the staff thought about some ways they wanted to use that creatively, and so that is the transformation that you see now, that it was all cleaned up, the trees were taken away, we had mulch delivered. So that's going to be a play area for students who need just a different kind of space for play, so that they can feel connected and appropriate and have some outside space. She's already working with the youth service, the youth center, to perhaps put some garden beds, some raised garden beds in there, to do some gardening. You'll see there's a track that's around there. We have some students who are part of the RISE program, some students are still working on their motor skills, it gives them some availability to go outside and practice riding a bike, as opposed to having to do some of those things on those therapies within the classroom. So that is super impressive. I want to really thank John Mullen, our Director of Facilities, Steve Foster, and Jeremy Brandl from Department, DPW, the Towns Department of Facilities, for making that happen this summer. And so I did make this slide for our custodians, maintenance, and DPW workers, and I didn't make a slide, but I do want to take a minute and just thank our secretary support, who has our schools up and running, did all of our POs, got staff in. And it's sometimes hard to thank your own, but I really want to give a nod to Central Office. Our Central Office staff worked incredibly hard this year to re, sort of, re-categorize our staff as you move from one building, making sure we're getting them, our staff in the right building, but onboarding new staff, transportation, just, there's an incredible amount of work that goes into starting a new school year, and Central Office staff, that was exceptional. So, next one. We also want to thank Erica Murphy and her food service team. They provided what's called summer eats all summer long, so kept our families fed, but really well-connected, putting up picnic areas, giving families an opportunity to stay and eat together if they wanted to, was, Erica and her team just do a tremendous, tremendous We want to thank all of our PTOs and community partners, what they did to help us beautify our schools. So the first two pictures you see in the bottom, that's at Thompson School, so that's just what the field looks like. And then some parent volunteers came together, and John Breen Landscaping came, donated mulch, and they turned that space into there. And then there's probably one other picture that I have, where it looks like a really nice play area for kids. And that's also the front of Thompson School there, on the bottom, of some beautification and some of the mulch that we received from John Breen Landscaping. And up top is our preschool friends, who are out there today, getting the preschool and the kindergarten ready for themselves. I think they had some grown-up helpers that were with them, too. But that happened throughout this, all of the schools. At Franklin School, I know the Downer Brothers landscaping services came out and donated their services. But I also want to take a minute and to recognize the North Andover Library, who kept our kids really connected and had lots of programs for our students this summer. North Andover Historical Society had lots of programs as well. They came to opening day. The educational leader at the Historical Society, David Blavett, how do you say David's last name? Do you know? Blavett. So he came over today and gave some nice gifts to our curriculum team, has really been studying up on investigating history and looking to do some partnerships, and what the Historical Society can do, as we already heard from Mr. Galant, community programs was exceptional during the summer. And our, in our partnership with the youth services with Rick Gorman could not have gone better this summer, and just thank you to everybody in the community. It really, it really just is a community event. We had new teacher orientation, we talked about that to our new teachers, that being a teacher in North Andover means more than just being a teacher in North Andover, it means being part of a community. Okay, so then just a few updates from me. So during the month of July, I attended the Leading Now Summer Institute in Washington, DC. As you may remember, that was something that I participated in this year. It's an organization for superintendents. There are over 50 superintendents there from across the nation. Some of the, some of the things that sort of highlights for me is I went to a school board summit that was focused on strengthening superintendent and school board collaboration. I went to a workshop on tighter budgets ahead, there are trends in K-12 finances, and I went to a workshop on what you need to know about AI and strategic budgeting. So those were the things that I participated when I was there. Then Kristin Ando and I attended the Paul J. Andrews Summer Institute in Falmouth this year, and then Kristin Ando, myself, and Carol Larkum, I think from the district, we were also presenters at this year's institute. We presented, our topic was partnering with your collaborative and sharing resources to fund key positions and build capacity for tier-one supports. So we share a inclusion coach with other districts that, so SEEM, the Collaborative of SEEM pays for, that we pay our portion in, and we share that. And so we talked about our experiences and how that works. We didn't have a huge group that came to our workshop, but the people that came, we had a wonderful and robust conversation. I am officially enrolled in the new superintendents induction program. This is sponsored by MAS. It's a three-year program, so this is year one of that. So I have a coach, her name is Jane Trembley, she is amazing. Jane is a retired superintendent from Linfield. She also is the person who runs the new, I want to say new student, the new superintendent induction program. Jane came to our meeting yesterday. She, I think, will be here at the next school committee meeting to introduce herself to you, to talk a little bit about some of the work that she'll be doing with me. She will be coming with me on building rounds, she'll be coming to leadership meetings, and then I participate in both remote and in-person workshops. So I'm partnered with a superintendent, with a superintendent from Stonem, Hopkinton, Swanscott. And a highlight of my July was I was a guest reader at Pike Dreams Cupcake. She initiated Story Hour this year, and she asked different people from the community to come in and read stories, and that was my group of readers over there. I read something about a cupcake, I can't remember now, but we had fun, and then we did some cup, a little cupcake craft together, and then the staff got to enjoy some, the Central Office staff got to enjoy some cupcakes when I came back.
They're good.
They are great. In August, so NCIP continues, I had a, one of my virtual classes in August. We had a North Andover Public Schools table at National Night Out. You see a picture of, I think, that's Carol Larkum there, and we had some games, and the kids would play the games. We have decided that the one where you throw the ball at the target, that's the best one, they love it. And then you see that wonderful book, table of books, and we did not have one prize left when the night was over. It was fantastic. So we participated in that. At National Night Out, I worked with the cable cam, and Brian Fraser, and his team, and we did some interviewing of students, and I don't have it here, I'll be happy to send it to you, but I asked the students, what are they excited about, going back to school, what they wish their teachers, what they wanted their teachers to know, as, about themselves as learners, or what they think every teacher should know about students, and then was there a person that was impactful in their life in North Andover? And we put it together into a video, and we, I shared that with the teachers last, yesterday, at our meeting. We had new staff orientation, that's the bottom left. Again, Eric Murphy and her team did a great job putting together a nice spread, and you see some of our new teachers, this is when they were meeting with their mentors and doing some of the work. And then, so again, yesterday was opening day, and we've had professional development both yesterday and today. So that's August. What I put on here is nothing that we have to click into, but I just wanted to recognize that we had talked a lot about communication, some of the things that the public had shared was about transparency and giving some opportunities to sort of know what's coming. So I just wanted to highlight some of the things that, some of the ways we communicate. This year, I put together a summer welcome video, that came right from community chat. Mr. Brown had one of their community chats, a parent had shared from a previous district where she had gone, that superintendents had done that, Mr. Brown forwarded it to me. So I sent that out to everybody, hopefully you had a chance to watch that. Nightly News, that's our newsletter that we send out, that's a newsletter that is available in any language, there's a translation right on there, we already sent out our first one this year. We have our website, we have Facebook page for North Andover Public Schools, we're trying to be a little bit more active on it. This summer, we were sharing some of the new staff that came aboard. And then we have also started a Kittredge Elementary School Project Facebook page, where we'll just be posting updates about things that are happening in that. I do have a North Andover Superintendents Instagram account. I'm not as great on that one, I'm working on it. I'll get better. I do think the reason, one of the reasons I started that is I think our students are, I think our families or parents are maybe more into Facebook, but I think our students are a little bit more into Instagram. So I am trying to appeal to our population of students and share some information with them that I think is important. And then I am on Twitter, and again, I don't know how, how much people go into Twitter these days, and not Twitter X, formerly known as Twitter, I don't know how much, but I do try to post on that as well. So those links are hot, there's no need to go to them.
I think there's a way, if you post something on Facebook, you can automatically have it posted to Instagram, too.
There is. I'm trying just to make sure that I don't mess up my professional accounts with my personal accounts. So I haven't made that jump quite yet.
Good point.
Good choice.
Savvy, but not that savvy. And then I just wanted to share with you that our school, our district theme this year is rooted in purpose and growing in practice. We really want to honor the strong roots that we've cultivated over the last few years, but we're looking upward, we're looking towards growth, we're looking towards collaboration and deeper impact. We had our, I might have missed, somewhere in there, I'm just going to go back to August for a second, we had our leadership retreat at Merrimack College. We, I want to thank Merrimack College, that's a partnership that we created with them, that they allowed us to use their space. It was wonderful. We had three days with all of our leaders in the district, including our new leaders, focusing on our new goals, reviewing past work, looking forward to school improvement plans. So that was great. So again, this is our theme, it's going to drive everything that we're doing, we talked about it with our teachers yesterday, you'll see it probably moving forward in more of our presentations, much like we sort of had an Olympic theme last year, this makes sense to us. Some of the things that you might have heard me talk about in my sort of video address is that we'll be starting our work on a strategic plan. So as we all know, my path here has been not as traditional as most, so typically a superintendent does an entry plan, and an entry plan leads to a strategic plan, because...
Stuff.
Stuff in life. I'll sort of be working on an entry plan, and we'll be working on a strategic plan sort of simultaneously, together, part of the new superintendent induction program, that is part of the work that I have to do. But we are in a place where we really need to get our five-year strategic plan in place. So perhaps next meeting, I think the special education is going to be a lot, so I don't know that I'm, that I want to do those two presentations at once, but I do want to go more in-depth of what the strategic plan will look like, the forms that we'll have, and how that plan will roll out. And then you have a couple little gifts. You have our Rooted in Purpose and Growing in Practice sticker for your water bottle or anything else that you like. And then when our, last year, as our, as we were shutting down the current Kittredge as we know it, we had made a little thank you note for our staff and created a Kittredge logo pin for them, so I just gave you a copy of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. So for the chair update, August 7th, we had a school committee retreat, we did some training with John...
Massaro.
Massaro, former superintendent and school committee member. He helped walk us through and remind us what our roles and responsibilities are and the different ways we can have. We do our job as school committee members. We also talked, we did not do, we did not approve anything, except we did have an executive session before, and we formally did approve the superintendent's contract, and that was signed there, but I wanted to announce that publicly on TV, that we came to terms with Superintendent Lethrop for a contract for two years. We are very excited to have you for that time, and that we were able to come to terms quickly, and now we can really dig in and start to do that work. We, I put out in the nightly news that one of my goals as chair this year is to make sure that we continue to think about our own communication as a school committee, and one of the things that I am going to try, and I hope I'm able to do it, is, and I saw people chattering about it on Facebook already, is I'm going to send out a recap of our meeting within a day or so of either tomorrow and/or Monday, of, after every school committee meeting, of just a three to five key takeaways about what we did, so that people can feel really informed immediately. Yes, we do have the agendas, yes, we do have the minutes, but those are often afterwards, and we want to make sure that people know, like, if we do a first read of something today, that, that we did that, that they're ready to come give comment next time if necessary.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Where are you going to be putting that recap, so people know where to find it?
Oh, I think, I think we're just going to, I can email it out, right?
We can email it out, and I can look, put it on the North Andover Public Schools Facebook page.
That would be, since we can share that on our own, just to kind of broaden the reach and things.
Just want to make sure people know where to find it.
Facebook, Instagram.
It's out there for the world. I was just thinking emailing it to the families directly, so that it appears there, and you don't have to go looking for it, we're giving it to, in the right spot.
I think the Facebook page allows community members to see it as well, if they're interested in it. And we could actually, what we could do is on the website, is you have a school committee page on the website, you can, we could just make a category of school committee meeting updates, and just, so it's always there, so people can just go back and find it, too.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, since it's got the record.
Yeah, then we can just send a link to that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
And it won't be long and in-depth, it'll be like our meeting, it'll be three to five key takeaways of the big things that happened. Thank you, Mrs. Ando and Superintendent Lethrop. A bunch of us got to participate in the Curriculum Council PD right after the end of school last year on June 18th. I was there a day, Melissa, you were there, too? Were you not?
Kelly was there.
Kelly, were you?
A lot of us were there.
Most of us were there.
A long time ago, is that what?
It was, Kristin was doing a PD for teachers to understand HQIM and its importance and the rolling it out, if I'm remembering this correctly, and we got to go and attend, and the learners alongside everybody else. It was a small PD that became a very large PD, because more teachers wanted to participate, and then she's like, you come, too? And we went, and it was wonderful. We got to be students for the day and to really learn about the things that are happening in the classroom. And we, we just got to do the activities alongside everybody, and I loved it.
Mr. Chair, can I add one thing to that? I found that very valuable, to, and I think it was good, it went a long way, too, with the staff, that we were there. At least that was my takeaway.
Our staff expressed very much that they appreciated that you took the time to come and learn about what we're doing, and why it's important, and hear them out, and you know what I mean, and listen, and they thought, you know, they could honestly open up and talk about that. talk about that. So thank you so much for attending. Oh, we'll do it again. It was too much fun not to do it again.
No, but also, for those of us that are, you know, maybe not immersed in the, you know, modern educational techniques, it's very useful, actually, I thought, so.
And a couple, I apologize that these weren't included on my original list for the agenda, but a couple of things I thought of. One, Lucy McCarthy did send out bus routes yesterday, I think it was yesterday. So those should be in parents' emails, and there's things about bus passes if you need them and all that, so check your emails if you have questions about that. Two, we also went to National Night Out, and we're next to you. We still have leftover popsicles.
Popsicles.
That we will bring to the, we'll bring to the farmer's market, maybe?
Oh, yeah. I had two colas full, I still got a colas.
We gave out a lot of tasty pop, freezy pops, and we still have more, so we'll be back.
How about bubbles?
And bubbles, I got bubbles.
We, we went through some bubbles, too. I was at convocation yesterday. I, it was my first day of school in Chelsea, so I thank you Superintendent Lathrop and Greg Landry for letting me go first to say some welcome remarks and get to work only a little late, and I hope the rest of it went well. They laughed at a couple of my jokes, and that made me feel good, because either they were laughing at me for making the jokes or at the jokes themselves, but I'm gonna say it as well.
They were good jokes. They were great jokes, and I didn't, I forgot to say this, several staff members did comment about how much they appreciated your message, and they found it to be very warm and inspiring and connected to who they are as educators. And I think, I think yesterday was a, was a good welcome back day.
Good. I'm glad that, I'm glad it was a good welcome back day for everybody. Yesterday at football practice afterwards, William was telling me about how a bulldozer or something ran into a transformer at Atkinson School Parking Lot, and the lights went out at the, at the, at the field, and there was no lights at Atkinson or at the A B C C maybe, in the houses around there, but it got all fixed, right?
It did get all fixed.
We had to do a little shift this morning for some PD, but thank you for all that.
Accurate rendition of what happened. There was a...
There was, there was a big boom, he told me.
Yes.
Oh.
At Atkinson. So, but we were out, we were powered, without power at Atkinson A B C C today, so we did, just as Mr. Hicks said, we did a pivot and shifted PD, but power was restored by this afternoon, and all is good.
All is good. Thank you to the electrical workers for getting that up and running again.
Everybody, the town, everybody.
It went today. And thank you for the teachers and everyone, and for, to you for making the plan shift to the other places to still have PD happen. That brings me to the end of the chair updates. Moving on to school building committee updates. Finally, the North Andover Middle School Building Committee had our final meeting, where we paid our final invoices. We had, I think, maybe around $250,000 to $300,000 left that we didn't spend. We came in on time and very under budget. Those monies go back to the capital funds to be used on other school projects. It might be like $150,000 all said and done when things even out, but we, it wasn't a small amount of money. It was a good, it was a good chunk that we made sure we were good stewards of, but we are officially done.
Nice job.
So thank you. Mr. Brown, Kittredge Elementary School update?
Yes, so that is in heavy duty, full gear now. We met June 24th, July 15th, July 22nd, August 4th, and we're going to meet again on September 9th. Most of the summer work has been on floor plan updates, building forms, materials, classroom layouts, security considerations, can't read my own writing, oh, well, a lot of time on the HVAC system, going with the, and there's an entire meeting devoted to that. We're going to go high-tech and modern with that, using something called a geothermal system.
Fantastic.
It's popular now, gaining a lot of, it offers a longer lifespan, it's less complex, it requires less maintenance, might be a little bit, tiny bit more expensive upfront, but the long-term gain is significant. Plus, thanks to our architects and the owner project manager, they're, they've encouraged us to go this way, and we did vote to do it, because there's $4 million of incentives that we can get by doing so that would be otherwise not there. So...
Incentives from whom?
Incentives from state and federal, I believe federal.
Well, it's the second part I think I wouldn't count on.
Yeah, but there is a significant part of it state. I don't remember the breakdown, but, so that was pretty exciting, and I ate that up, because I'm an engineer and I love that kind of stuff.
Can you put this in sort of context? It's summertime, why are you doing all this right now? I mean, I think I know the answer, but I think it'd be helpful to say to everybody.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So the reason to be moving at such a pace, right, is to keep on the MSB, the Mass School Building Committee's calendar, right?
With the purpose of...
Right, making sure we get approved for the...
Which is supposed to happen when?
So, that's coming up. The target is MSBA Board approval for scope and the budget in December. Well, before that, schematic design report will submit in October, so, so that they can, their board can approve us for scope and budget in December.
Is there any reason to think that they won't?
No. In fact, quite a bit of time, and...
Quite a bit of time. We, we passed the first phase, but we are working on the educational plan as well. Kara Larkum and Joe Clark, Jaclyn Taylor, Kristin Ando are doing that with our architects. I don't know, there's really, I, you know, never say never, but we are moving along at the rate that we should be and making some good decisions. I'm thinking you're probably going to get there, Mr. Brown, about the survey that's out there. Are you?
Yes. I was gonna say that there is, yes. Man, my handwriting really went bad today. So there's, there's, communications went out that, that we're looking for community feedback on, on some of the look and feel kind of stuff.
The facade.
You know, what do the facades look like, the window placement, you know, what materials are we going to use, that kind of thing, to try to get community feedback on that before final decisions are made.
Are those surveys still open?
I think they're...
I believe they are still open.
But not for much longer, so if people out there want to get their opinions in.
We've had a, we've had a very good turnout or showing or collection of information.
And that's on that survey, they can find it on the schools.
They can find it in the school, on the Kittredge School Project Facebook page? Yes, they can.
That's where it is, and I think it's on a town.
It's on the town page. It's on, yes, it was, went out in an email.
Yeah. We have, what I was gonna say is that we spent a lot of time going through different options for that, and your question was about, you know, is there concern about approvals? In every single meeting, the architects, and in particular, the owner product, project manager, who has a lot of experience doing these sorts of projects, takes time in every, in every meeting to go through his recommendations and what, through their experiences that done a lot of these projects, what's likely to pass, what's likely not to pass, right, to shape our application to be, have the highest likelihood of getting approved.
So the owner prod, project manager works for us?
Yes.
Right.
Yes. And is, is, I think, tops. I mean, they're, I've been very impressed with them from a technical point of view.
That's who we worked with for the middle school renovation project. I think to answer your question, Mr. Voskovich, too, is that we are aggressively, actively engaging in the Kittredge School Project with the intention of opening when we have anticipate, anticipating opening. FY...
This target, I know, is to ask for approval for monies at this upcoming town meeting.
Oh, absolutely. Right.
Yeah, so, we're on track for that.
So ideally, construction will start ten months from now or something like that. Did I get my arithmetic right? Try not to do it in public.
Oh, maybe about right. Yeah, this approval would be in May. We have to approve our share.
Yeah. And then, monies would be available on July 1st, and then we can go with things.
So that, I think, that's, that's all the highlights.
Thank you. Sorry, Mrs. Ando.
Sorry.
Educational update.
It's all right. And Mrs. Lathrop went up, Ms. Lathrop went over a lot of it, but we are going to celebrate again, which is great. Again, here's our Rooted in Purpose, Growing in Practice theme that we're working on, and I just have a few teaching and learning updates for you tonight. Here are our district improvement goals for the coming year as the educational goals. So the first one, shockingly, is about high-quality instructional materials. All students will engage in rigorous grade-level learning experiences grounded in high-quality instructional materials where available. HQIM is not available in every subject yet, and so we're going to be working with teachers in those subjects in order to make more consistency for our students, that are consistent across classrooms and designed to build the knowledge and skills needed for success in college, career, and life. Our second goal continues to be multi-tiered system of support. Generally, we have tier one, tier two, and tier three. Goal one is really about tier one, and then, the second goal is about what do we do when students struggle, or what do we do when we're not meeting the needs of students, with the idea that all students at all tiers, in both traditional academic and then other subjects as well, social-emotional learning and those that we aren't necessarily always considered traditional, so related arts sort of things. And so, how do we, how do we meet needs of students? So these continue to be our improvement goals going forward. Summer programming, we had almost 1,500 students participate in some sort of summer programming. I know. Like, it's a lot between community program, our extended school year, our high school credit recovery programs, and the calculus project. And so, the picture there is the picture of the calculus project closing ceremony, where we had 60 middle schoolers who came for three additional weeks of math instruction during the summer and graduated from the calculus project, and so, very exciting stuff. And so...
Do you know what differentials are?
I don't know, probably. The thing is, I'm like, probably...
The goal is not to teach them calculus in middle school, but make sure they are getting what they need so they can take calculus.
They can be on track.
So, I was gonna say, I mean, I'm so old-fashioned that I didn't even get to it until college.
I know.
Right.
But there's no reason they couldn't, you know, there's a difference between being able to teach it and understanding the basic, you know, the basic idea that you're looking at change and that sort of thing. But do you get into that, or just more that they have to have the algebra?
So it's the idea that we want our students to be able to have access to calculus by the time they're a senior in high school. And so, the idea that how do we shore up math identity and math skill in order so that students can get there. Also, generally, we target students. Everybody is allowed to join the calculus project, but we specifically target students who have been on the margins mathematically, so girls, students of color, that we want to accelerate in order for them to have access to calculus, but I'm sure they get into some of it.
No, that's, that's, speaking as one who's used it in life for real, I mean, that, that's so important, right? When you, if, if you fall behind, it's just like reading, really. If you fall behind in math at that point, it's really hard to catch up. Really hard to catch up. Right? But if you have a solid foundation, by the time you start high school, you're in way better shape.
And so, it's quite notable that these young people came forward and did three extra, I mean, it was nine to two full days, extra weeks of calculus, and they looked like they were having a pretty good time. And so, or extra weeks of math, exactly, to get to this point, but it's, it's one of our projects that we're most proud of. And so, good stuff.
Yeah.
Awesome. Professional learning, our teachers did all sorts of things. You've heard in these meetings about asynchronous courses that teachers are taking. We've gotten a lot of feedback about how teachers want asynchronous online courses so that they can meet the needs of their life as well. And so, we've designed five or six of them for the summer, so that our teachers will stay here, learning what, what we're, what we're, what's aligned to our goals, rather than seeking these asynchronous courses at other places. And so, we had over 150 teachers take part in our asynchronous courses, and we've gotten great feedback, so that's exciting. This is...
These are high-quality, worthwhile, good things for them to do.
Designed by Mrs. Ando and her team.
Exactly, designed by her team.
That wasn't a question, that was a statement, sorry.
Right, 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 exactly. Really exciting. So you, we touched on the opportunity myth in our curriculum council meeting. I then designed an entire course if someone wanted to read and interact with the entire white paper. And so, very, and very similar, Jackie and Joe and Kara designed courses similar, and so...
Opportunity myth?
The opportunity myth is the piece of research we read when you were at my PD, the one about the 17% of students interacting with grade-level material.
The myth being that if you work hard and do the stuff in high school, that you'll graduate prepared, and based on the materials that kids are having access to, they're not.
Right, the numbers were shockingly small, right?
Exactly. And so, the, I pulled out a piece of that for that PD, for that research-based project we were doing, and there were teachers who wanted to know more, so there were teachers that spent upwards of 20, 30 hours with me, reading, discussing, researching that particular piece of research. And so, Eureka Math Squared, Instructional Leadership Institute, Pam talked about already, responsive classroom, Open SAI, Literacy Lounge, Instructional Leadership. So we had a, I was, I'm always moved by the idea that our teachers' professional learning never takes a break, that the idea that there isn't, like, most of our teachers are working really, really hard over the summer in order to improve their practice. So, really awesome stuff. Awesome. Here's HQIM again, here's our curriculum council, we're so proud, we had teachers, school leaders, district leaders, and school committee attending. I did not capture any of you on film, upset about that, but we were, it was a wonderful kickoff.
Is that a picture at the Summer Institute at Holy Cross?
No, this was at the September 18th, I mean, sorry, June 18th.
Okay.
So we see the middle school crowd there, we see it work, and then, I love this picture of Principal Erin O'Loughlin from the Atkinson, deep in thought, finding her evidence. And so, good stuff. It was well-received, and we got very good feedback from the session. And again, thank you all for attending. It meant a lot to me and our staff that you were there. North Andover High School worked in deeper learning teams. I captured a few of our leaders, Ms. Holman and Mr. Young and Ms. O'Leary about, they were different, so we kicked off the event on the 18th, the session that you attended, and then, high school teams worked in smaller groups to either examine HQIM, look at their standards, look at their curriculum, standards-based, developing common assessments, that kind of work. And so, Deb led that work, Ms. Holman, principal at North Andover High, led that work over the summer, so really good stuff. And then, Eureka Math Squared PD, Pam talked about it a little bit, but this was my favorite day, because I got to be a student in this one. You see Ms. Leahy there in the pink, I'm right behind her, but I got to be a student in the third-grade group and learn from our third-grade teacher leaders, so it was incredible. Our teacher leaders then turned around and taught the rest of our teachers this morning. And so, so in middle of August, Joe and Jackie led a session for teacher leaders, they turned around, and 144 teachers participated in the Franklin School cafeteria this morning, learning about Eureka Math Squared and unpacking one of the first units. So, real wonderful. It was, it was a wonderful experience. It was, it was, it was also exciting to be a student. That was really, that was the best part of it.
It was challenging. I was in the first-grade group. And I will say, I had to really think about some of the questions that were being posed to me as a first grader, because you, part of the unpacking is doing the work yourself and just sort of like, you really, the challenge is, it does, expands the student.
It was.
And this reminder is the curriculum that we adopted last spring.
Yes, exactly.
To put all this in perspective, this is 140 teachers out of how many who could conceivably, it's probably a pretty big percentage, right? Because this isn't...
It's all of them.
That's all of our K to five teachers.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, so 100% of the teachers who are going to use it were there, that's pretty cool.
We're in the same room. General education, special education, ESL, everybody.
Wow, that's, that's great.
It was terrific, exactly. It was great. So we had a great big session in the cafeteria, and then, we broke off into smaller sessions where our teacher leaders facilitated.
And how many teacher leaders are there?
There are, hold on, let me think for a minute, 18.
Total? Across the whole district?
K to five.
Ah.
Mm-hmm.
Out of how many teachers K to five?
About 144.
So more than 10%, more than one in 10?
Mm-hmm. So we have at least two at each grade level, K1, 2, 3, 4, 5, that, and they work together to facilitate the smaller sessions. We're hoping, as we roll out Eureka Math, which you adopted in spring, thank you, we hope that we will keep the group together. And so, we will have this like large group model for a short amount of time, and then, and then we will have this train-the-trainer model for, but the idea that our entire third-grade teaching staff can sit and meet together to look at the curriculum, unpack, look at student work, those sort of things, so...
I'm guessing they really like that.
They do.
And it's gonna carry over, because they're gonna call each other during the year.
They were still talking about it as they were walking out the hall. You know, like, when you're excited about professional development, they were like, walking out and leaving, making, you know, let's do this when we get back to the building, or I'm gonna do this then, which is great to see. We have three teacher leaders, or those F, what we call the FCIs in every building, right? One lead teacher that also functions as an FCI, so in general, four at every building. And then, this year, we have hired two special education FCIs, who their job will be to help support all special education. Eventually, we'd love to have one at every building, but gotta start with what you can.
Yep, gotta start somewhere.
Thank you, is that the...
Of course. And then, the leadership retreat, which Pam talked about, which I am just so proud of our leadership team. These were our objectives, strengthen the team, reflect on last year, align our goals for this year, and examine various operational issues. And it was just a pleasure and a joy to plan, execute, and reflect on the retreat. Our leadership team is just absolutely top-notch, and we're really proud. So, yep, that's what I have for you.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Moving right along, so that we only end a little overtime.
There we go.
So, continued business. We have three items, the first being overnight field trip requests. We heard these previously. One of the things that Michelle is doing for us, so that we can remember things, on her item sheet, she put the, she's putting, she put the first read for us so that we know when we did the thing to help us. So, because you don't always have to do them in order, and sometimes there's a gap. You don't have to do them consecutively. So, we did a first read of this at one of our last beans last time, June twelfth. The goal tonight is to take a vote and hopefully approve the field trips as presented. These are some of the typical overnight field trips that we've done in the past. Some of them happened sooner, and thank you to Kristin, and I imagine Ms. Holman and all of her people for getting these in previously.
Has anything changed on these since we reviewed them before?
No.
Nope, and we didn't get any questions from anybody.
And these are, I don't think any of these are, these are all like, trips we have gone on before. DECA might be in a different location, but they have done DECA trips before.
Previously approved, previously attended, yes.
So, the chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the overnight field trip requests as presented in our packet.
Thank you, Mrs. Cormier.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any questions or discussion?
What's DECA?
It's academic competition.
It's business-oriented.
I'm sorry?
It's business-oriented. They're usually business-oriented presentat, you know, competitions.
And they do, they do some local, and then some of the kids, some of the teams will qualify to go to the national competition, and our kids have done very well in the national. They do, like, I know there's some entrepreneurship presentations, there's some, like, trivia competition-y things.
Yeah, they cover all different management topics, you know, entrepreneurship is one, but they'll do marketing, they'll do business planning, they'll do strategy, all of that.
So, these are high school students?
High school students, yeah.
And they perform, and like, we've done very well at the national levels with it. Pretty cool.
I wanna echo the thank you of getting these in early. It's very exciting at our, like, first official live meeting of the year to be on a second read, to get these out. It's super exciting.
It's taken us three years to get there.
We're here.
We're not in a panic, yeah.
You know, keep getting these batches in early. Hopefully, we'll see a lot more.
And this doesn't mean we will not, we are, we can still approve overnight field trip requests. They do take two reads, so if you, if teachers, if you're listening, the sooner the better. Okay, we'll move on to a vote. Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Sams?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, five to zero. Moving on to student activity counts. Again, we did this on June twelfth was the first read, the student account, oh, am I talking about these? Do you wanna present these? I don't know what is normal.
A lot of times, you can, and then if there's questions, Miss Dowd can answer them.
So, student activity counts, these are monies that, they, we have to approve them every year. The attached list reflected the existing student activity accounts and each account's current status. They confirm that if there's zero, we still need to have the accounts, and the goal is to vote to approve them as presented in the packet. I don't, chair will entertain a motion.
You don't have them because you got them on June twelve.
Oh, well, they were back then, right, right, right. Yeah, you can click on the blue thing if we need to see them, but, chair will entertain a motion.
I will move, Mr. Chair, that we approve the FY twenty-six student activity accounts.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I second.
Thank you, Mrs. Sams. Any questions and or comments? This is routine, almost like routine business.
This is like the other one.
Right, they're all revolving, right?
Yes, and these are used by student, these are the ones used by student groups.
They have to have the money to spend it.
Well, they were, they have the, in many cases, they have the money in there already.
And this is a requirement that you have to get the list approved every year by school committee. There's no budget, it's, it's a routine required by Jesse that you have to get them approved.
Our vote is to allow them to spend the money they have.
We're just approving that they exist.
Exactly.
Yeah. That's all we have to do.
Right.
And we get to see that they have monies in them, that's, yeah.
And if you have one of these accounts, the student, if they have an advisor of some sort, I'm saying...
And someone is in charge of, if they have to need money out of them, there's a process.
Bourbon bread, there's all these different things, okay.
Moving on to a vote. Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Sams?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. This one might be a little bit more, might need more. I won't go through this as quick. We did the first read of this actually on June fifth. We did a follow-up second read on June twelfth. The goal tonight is to approve the revisions to policy JFAB. This is the residency policy that was revised, and then revised again for approval. If I remember correctly, Mrs. Lathrop, this is so that we can, it gives us the ability to re-verify residency. Before, we were only doing it at the beginning of elementary school. Now, we'll do it where, beginning of elementary, beginning of middle, and beginning of high school.
We'll do it, yes.
So, may I remember that correctly?
Yep.
And it also empowers you to do it anytime you uncover anything that raises a suspicion that someone might not be...
That was always in here before, but we're just gonna, we're gonna elicit that practice, and then we added in, you asked us to add in that the superintendent shall have the final authority for determining residency in the district.
But the gist of this is we're gonna do it automatically more often.
Correct. We're being much more diligent about just checking residency. And, and what is difficult is, I think what we want our families to know is that it doesn't mean that we don't, you know, if we ask for residency, it doesn't necessarily mean that we don't wanna believe you. And it's, we're hoping that we can be, what has happened in the past, sometimes if there was a reason that we might wanna check residency, sometimes was a confrontational conversation or people could feel uncomfortable about it. That's not our intention, but sometimes something comes to light, and we might ask people to re-verify residency. But then, we also are putting in some, some maybe safeguards that we're going to do it every time you transition from a school. So, when you leave elementary school, before you head to middle school, we're gonna redo the process for every single person. And when you leave middle school, going into night, into high school, we're gonna redo the process for everybody as well.
It made good sense in June, and it still does.
Great.
Was there any public comment? Did you hear anything? I didn't, I didn't, as a school committee member, I didn't get anything.
I haven't gotten any, any emails or anything. So, this will, and we're, we were able to push it to now to approve because the process of re-verifying, this happens in springtime?
It happens, will happen in the spring. We were going to try to do it this summer for fifth going to sixth, but there was just too much going on, so we will start this process in the spring.
Chair will entertain a motion.
I move we improve the new residency policy.
Thank you, Mr. Moskovich.
Seconding.
Thank you, Mrs. Cormier. Any further questions, comments, concerns?
Yes. Can we fix the parentheticals? There's a hanging parenthetical on that, in that red.
It goes open, closed, closed.
And then, I just, and I think this was meant to be fixed. When we have the residency verification process, when to verify? I don't think we were gonna do from kindergarten to elementary. I think we were doing elementary to middle. Is that right, as an example?
Yes, I had her change that. So, does yours still say kindergarten to...
It does, yes.
Here it says elementary school to middle.
On the, in the red.
In the red.
Go down.
Oh, she didn't, we didn't change it there.
Yeah.
We'll change that. Okay? Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, we'll move on to a vote. Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Sams?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yep.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Public comment? Seeing none. We'll notice a new addition here, committee comments. This used to exist a long time ago, and at one point was removed. We are putting it back in. You don't, you are, it's an opportunity for committee members to make individual comments on things that they are concerned about, or they would like to say publicly. Not to open up discussion, but merely for you to state. You don't ever have to say anything, it's up to you, but I think it's important that we have that. I would say I would like to keep this limited to two to three minutes per person. So, same guidelines that you might have for public comment, we should also use for ourselves. Like, don't want you to go on for twenty minutes, but a minute or two or three would be perfectly fine. I don't think anyone has it here, but I just wanna take a moment to explain what they are. None? Okay. Our next meeting is going to be September eleventh, right here in the school admin building. Chair will entertain a...
Before you do that, I forgot to mention that in your packet, you asked for the fall open houses. So, in your packet, you have a list of all the open houses. If there's an open house or something that you're interested in knowing more about, we certainly can let you know the time, but that's when that is, when all of the open houses are.
So, I was gonna...
So, just a quick question about that. So, if I was interested in attending as a school committee member, would you wanna know that in advance, or...
I would like to know that, so I can let...
On that, I was gonna say, can we maybe have a couple of school committees, maybe do a school committee chat at some of these open houses, if possible?
You could do some, I, certainly, I don't know exactly how all schools run theirs, but sometimes they have, like, a section, like, in the library where they have the PTO set up,